All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Mr. Bird, I will hand it over to you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Excited to be here tonight with Dan Ripperger from Holden Advisors, who we've had the privilege of working with for the last nine months, conducting our compensation and classification study of service employees. You should have in the packets that Ms. Hall prepared, but not just the presentation that you have prepared, but also the report that is the final report from Holden. But I thought, as I did for the Finance and Budget Committee, I thought I would take just a few minutes to give a little bit of background, grounding of why we did this study in the first place, why it makes sense to go with an outside vendor to complete it, and some of the recommendations right at the top. So framing for what Mr. Ripperger's going to go through. So just as a quick preview, the recommendations that came out of Holden's report had a number of action steps for us as a division to help improve our compensation structures for our service employees, getting tighter on our definitions of certain families, career levels, for clarity, updating our job descriptions, again, improving that clarity, simplifying our pay grade structure, and then adopting a more rubric-based approach for classification as we go forward. We already have a handful of next steps that we have been pursuing as part of this. And so there's no recommended action by the board at this time. This is going to be something that feeds into the fiscal year 27 budget planning. So just as a quick background of why do a classification study at all? It is best practice, not just in the education sector, but the working sector overall, to do a periodicity assessment of positions. Gives you the opportunity to say, hey, does the job description for those positions still match the duties? Are our internal pay practices equitable for people doing similar roles, or roles with similar scope of authority, impact, and influence the organization? And is what we're paying competitive compared to our peers in the area? And it makes a lot of sense to use an external vendor to do this for a couple of reasons. One, reliable access to better information. Mr. Ripperger and his team have the ability to access market information that we simply do not. It also gives us the neutral, unbiased point of view that can give not just our office, but this board and all of our staff a sense that it was a neutral point of view to do this assessment. This was also timely. The majority of our service positions have not been assessed in six fiscal years, and we've had a major reorganization since then. So we knew going into this that there was some risk that things had gotten out of alignment. So it was timely to do this, to have a chance to reassess things. We focused on service positions for this for a reason. So not all employees were included in this study. We included administrative clerical roles, our skilled and semi-skilled trades, technology, and skilled professionals in operating departments. Our main reason for this is that these roles are ones where there are strong comparisons, not just to other school divisions, but to the public sector at large and also to the private sector. The jobs in these categories exist outside of K-12 schools. The categories we didn't include are ones that are easy. It's either easier to model in-house, or even, not easy, easier to model in-house, like our administrators, our licensed positions, where we've done, the licensed positions in particular, we've done work, or there are things where we've already taken recent action. For example, transportation staff. This board is deeply familiar with how much action we've taken on bus drivers the last several years. We just, this past year, did a substantial change to our instructional support personnel pay. So those groups were not overdue for an assessment. The last thing, and then I'm going to stop talking and let our expert, Ms. Ripperger, give their presentation, is just to give a little bit of grounding of some terminology, because there's a lot of terms that can kind of get mixed up with one another. For the purpose of this, when we talk about a job, a job's a unit of work that is completed by a human. It is not, you know, that term can be used to mean a lot of different things, but for our purposes today, it is a unit of work. Classification is when you are looking at a job and thinking about how does that get grouped with other things, taking into consideration the external market, and then how you place that on a pay scale. A pay scale is, well, what it sounds like. Ranges of pay, the jobs with similar classifications or something. And then a position is an actual role that is aligned to jobs and is aligned to a pay scale based on classification to which employees are hired and employed. I think those first and last terms often get used interchangeably. You know, what's my job? What's my position? So we just wanted to clarify that to help guide some of the things that we're considering for this analysis. That's enough framing for me, and if that's all right, I will hand it over.
I can score back, or you can?
Just the mouse. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight, kind of walk over the summary report. I am Dan Ripperger. I'm the President of Holden Rewards, which is the Division of Compensation Consulting and other types of services, kind of under that broad umbrella of organizational effectiveness. The, one of the reasons, hopefully, in deference is that you hired us is we actually know a lot about this. Been doing it for 35 years, and it's painful when I think about how much I've actually thought about the difference between classification and a job, and what it means, how it fits into the system. So if I get a bit fastidious, please just ask me questions as we go through, and we'll try to move forward. So the way the report's laid out, a brief introduction. We did a review of the current program for these positions. So by that review, it's really looking at the system that's in place now and trying to determine what parts of it are effective, where there might be some issues with it. And this is before we actually get into how much a person's paid, particularly how much that job they're in relative to market would be. So it is, to me, the really big deliverable, or the big benefit that walking away from this is, there's certainly a point-in-time picture that Patrick and his team will walk through too, when you get into cost and some of those things. But it's really a system that if you can get it implemented, regardless of how long it takes you to transition to, from a financial perspective, it should help you remain competitive. You know, it should help deliver on the objectives that you're looking for, like people having a perception that pays fair across their peers, without knowing exactly what their peer does necessarily, if that makes sense. So then we'll talk about market benchmarking, and then the specific recommendations that we have. So if I'm going to flip over to page two, if you're following along at home, the, this is an old framework. It's kind of compensation 101. And it's not to, really, the purpose of this is so that folks understand if there's some person's pay that's out of alignment, it could be a number of things, because this is all an interrelated sort of system. And, you know, when we start to look at the definition of a classification compared to a job, compared to a position, you know, as you guys move forward looking at policies, those are all going to have policy implications, you know, potentially in terms of how you want to move forward. So, you know, a key with this is quality job descriptions help drive right pay policies. You know, those are a big driver. And all of this, as we looked at it, is trying to keep in mind that there's a certain philosophy that the school system has. There's a certain type of employee that you think's going to be more successful here, that you really want to try and recruit and retain. And a lot of what we talk about from a design perspective are things that help support that. So just kind of a recanting of methodology. We looked at every piece of information we could get, and then some, on the current compensation program for the service staff. We also spent a lot of time doing interviews with individuals. And on page four, we list the individuals we actually talked to, just, you know, for posterity's sake. We did try to get some, more than one, but tried to get some representation from high school administrators, and just weren't able to get those folks on the schedule. I guess, you know, as they were doing their planning and those sorts of things. So I believe that the data, the matches, all of those other pieces are still well represented, but you'll notice there's none of those individual ones. So just a high-level overview. The good things that are going on, there is a formalized approach for job descriptions and job documentation, meaning there's a system that's in place. There's a well-established exempted, non-exempt status relative to the Fairly Understanders Act. So there's no sort of, of one person saying it's this, and another person saying it's another thing. There's a published schedule of active jobs with grades and ranges identified from a pay transparency, and certainly so that the board knows where individual jobs are graded in those items. And then certainly, there's a number of pay policies that govern starting rates, pay adjustments, and how it should be managed. As we dug through all of that and looked at it systemically, there are really four main areas from a redesign perspective that we feel like the school system should investigate, start to make changes on. And I think Patrick and his team have already started talking about some of these. First are job descriptions. They are all over the board, in terms of the types of information they collect, the thoroughness of it. They're all very situational. You know, you might be trying to hire somebody, so you need something quick. It's all transactional. So there's all an explanation for why they are that way, but it is certainly a very important effort as you, as you really look at fairly managing pay. And it's all about that perception that folks have, is having that process down, and a little bit of discipline and rigor as you're working with department heads and managers to... No one likes to write job descriptions. They're difficult to do well. I can write job descriptions well, but it takes me a week to write one for a secretary. It's so painful getting the words correct. That said, that exercise is still important. And that certainly, I think, is something going forward will be beneficial. And we'll talk a little bit more. A job title hire, so it's really a consistent use of titles to help folks understand some of the levels and different roles across the organization. There are discussion of a couple of different approaches for job evaluation, and just, there's a lot of nuance to it. But basically, a job evaluation system allows you to compare one of your jobs to another, outside of just what the going rate in the market is, to determine, well, you know, in terms of how, what we think of value of work, this job is worth more to us to get that relative picture. And then, lastly, the pay structure design. Really trying to work through something that both is consistent with the market for these roles and competitive, but also with some of the other structures that are in place. So it kind of fits that same cultural presentation. From a market benchmarking perspective, we reached out to 16 different public sector and school system employers. We never get complete participation, but when we get over 50%, we're very happy, from a sample perspective, particularly with the folks who've participated here, certainly being around you both slightly to the north and certainly a little bit to the south. One of the differences, we don't really look at pay ranges as we're going from institution to institution. We collect unidentified actual pay data. So we actually have records on over 35,000 employees. Through our matching process, they are assigned at 1,200 different jobs. You don't have 1,200 different jobs, right, that we're pricing here? But that is sort of the depth of what that is. We do follow, because we collect the data the way we do, and we promise that confidentiality to do so, we do follow Department of Labor and Federal Trade Commission guidelines on price fixing. And that's basically, we just hold it confidential and only provide summary statistics. So, and I'll just be fair about it. Normally, we'll also compare your structure to market. This is a comparison of your actual base pay. But the structure is so undefined in terms of how it's designed and kind of how it fits to market. There really wasn't a spot we thought we could compare to. So we really focused here on your actual pay. So if you compare it to just the peers, you would be 95.3% of the 50th percentile. And if we're looking at actual pay, because certainly there's some variability in performance, experience in a job, a lot of those things, if your pay is within plus or minus 10%, so if it's from 90% to 110%, we'd still say you're generally competitive. So what this is presenting is, in our mind, is you don't really have a competitive risk. Doesn't mean you're at market. It doesn't mean you're where you want to be on an individual basis, but this is, this is in the ballpark. As you would do a comparison to a broader market, so not just the peers, but looking at some, some of those jobs that you can compare outside of the peers in the general industry, or it could even be expanded public sector roles to the extent that those ones exist, the comparison is still very close at 94.5%. As you would expect, if we're going to compare you to the 75th percentile, you are less of a percentage. And just definitionally, what's there, assuming folks kind of have a feel for what the percentiles mean, but basically, the 75th percentile is a figure below which 75% of all of the rates reported to a job occur. So, you know, if you're talking about 100 people have been reported to a certain administrative role, the person who's at the 75th, or that 70%, 75th percentile, or 75% of the rates are below that.
Just out of curiosity, when we look at this percentiles, is it based on the beginning of the steps in the scale, or at the end? Are we?
This is actual pay.
It's just okay?
Right. And that's, that's where we just, we really couldn't, based, looking at your current structure, there's just nothing defined around where to start, where to end.
Okay.
Knowing too, that we were going to just look, put a new one in, we didn't worry so much about how your structure currently.
Yeah, and if I can offer a little color on that. In terms of the positions that were assessed during the study, you're on three different of our pay scales. There is the uniform scale that includes most of our service positions in more of our operating departments. There's the C scale, or the clerical scale, that has our administrative support and accounting support positions. Both of those are non-exempt employees, and they're on step and grade scales. And then there are some positions that were part of this study that are on the A or administrative scale that are pay bands. They are not step and grade scales, and most of the positions that are classified under those scales currently are exempt positions rather than non-exempt. And the rules of the road for how salaries are calculated and how people progress on those scales differ. And that is, you know, as I gave the preamble to this, it's the, we hadn't done the study in six years, and a lot of things have happened in six years, that we knew had introduced risk, that we had gotten out of alignment. And that's exactly part of what Mr. Ripperger is speaking to here.
Can I just get some clarification? Because you've got two sets of percentages there, right? You have a percentile score, and then you have a percent underneath it. And I'm just not clear what it means. So?
Sure.
That 89.2% in the 75th percentile, what does that mean?
Oh, to the 75th percentile?
Yeah.
So we took your overall average pay. So this is on a person-by-person basis, how we get there. So we take a person's actual pay and compare that to the market statistics for their job that are developed. There is a rate at the 75th percentile. So let's say an administrative assistant is, and this isn't going to equal 99.2%, is 60,000. The 75th percentile for that job is 70,000. It's simply dividing 60,000 by 70, and that would give you that ratio.
So, so I'm just, so are we saying that, I'm not sure which, are we saying that, like, what percentage of our 620 employees are at the 50th percentile?
No, it's not that kind of statistic. It's not a frequency.
Okay.
It's really just looking at overall how you're comparing, so.
So is it good, or is it bad? I don't know what the...
Well, that's what...
You said it was within 10% this way.
Yeah, so it's in the ballpark on actual pay, but it really depends on how long each individual's been in their role.
Right. I'm just, I'm just...
Yeah, just, any questions?
Who are the peers?
Yeah.
I was going to say.
Are the peers?
Who are the, who are the peers, the school, are the peers the school districts versus?
And county, and county.
These are county and schools.
But this is the all-general, so...
So there's all-general here, the peers. Here's the 10.
So the 10 are the peers?
Right.
So who are all-general?
So then we also used additional surveys. So we have a fairly robust library.
Versus a private.
And, correct, there's a lot of private organizations, commercial enterprises that are in that, in that data potentially.
Okay, so we know who the peers are. The other one, is it all, or is it geographic?
There were, about half of the ones that gave information were school districts.
Yeah, no, I get that, but I think they're saying all 10 are the peers.
Yes, they have.
And the other ones are just from somewhere else.
From a larger database.
So we don't know who we're being...
Right.
I think, I think that's where, hopefully you'll, to some degree, trust us to scope the data correctly, that it's representative. So it is certainly geographically based, in terms of where you're located.
For me, it's like, it's, it's not, it's how the peer number relates to the larger number. So if our peer number was like 72%, right? But all-general was still at 101, that might tell you something about the entire, like, kind of local industry. So...
But our benefits are different. I mean, I...
That's true.
I mean, if you, if you look at the schools versus, say, you know, a private sector business, I mean, we have a lot more holidays, we have, you know, we have a different compensation package. So I'm not sure I would really, but they're not that far off.
Again, this is, this is, this is not, this is the results of an analysis. We're not making any recommendation on this.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just trying to figure it out.
So it sort of suggests that we're relatively competitive, not only to our peer groups, but to general job categories that are similar, in their geographic area.
Well, the reason, the reason that we actually have that statistic in there is because more often than not, you'll hear from one of your administrative assistants or another, that, well, this is a school system, but there are all these other employers out there where the pay's higher. So we actually include that in these data, and it's, it's not substantial. It's essentially the same at these levels.
So, my, so, yeah, so just, I mean, I think in my mind, when I looked at this, and I'm not sure if I'm hearing you say it's a comparable admin to an admin when you're looking at like that kind of thing, right? So we're not looking specifically at like, so when you talk percentiles, maybe this is not of everybody in education, but when you talk percentiles, to me, I'll give you an example. When I took my GREs, they're like, congratulations, you're in the top 5% of your whatever. I mean, when I took my English, when I took my math ones, I was in the 95%. And I'm like, hmm, right. Or vice versa, because I don't even know the number. Do you understand what I'm saying? That's where that gets confusing, because it's like, if I'm in the top 5%, that means 95, I did better than 95% of the people. That's a percentile that we kind, that's where my mind is, but that's not what this is actually telling us, because there's not... We're, like, it's not like, if I'm looking at this peer number at 25%, like, when I read this, I look at this like, okay, we are in the 20th cent, 25th percentile of comparability, comparability, which means 75% of the workforce is better than us. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, sort of, but, but this is, this is a definitional thing, and hopefully you can, because there is, there is no being in the 90th percentile.
Okay.
Because the 90th percentile in any form, fashion, is a specific statistic. You know, it is a specific for a GRE, or GMAT, or any of those.
Okay.
So you can say you're above the 90th, or you're exactly at or below, but it is a discrete stat. I, I think, my guess is it'll be aided if we keep going.
Okay.
We'll talk a little bit.
Yeah. You can just explain this in a different way with other, other things? Because I still don't know what these numbers mean.
You know what? I'm not above hopping on the whiteboard and showing you when it's time.
We're not above watching you do it.
But just bottom line, this, to me, says, and tell me if I'm wrong, that we're not in bad shape with these percentages.
Percent.
I mean, is that, we could do, we could always do better? Or does this say we're good, bad, medium?
I'm going to complicate that as well, too, because you said, I mean, if we're looking at what the position is, one-to-one, right? Just take administrative assistant or whatever, just as one random one. If our job descriptions aren't clear, and our people are doing the work of four positions, that, that's super impactful on the end, at the end of the day number, right?
The matches, the, no, the matches are, are exact. It's not, not a question of the scope difference.
Okay, okay.
And I guess before we move on from this, from that grid, what, so the 25th percentile, where we're at like 101, and everybody's kind of at 101, 102%, does that mean that essentially the more somebody earns, we are more competitive versus like maybe entry level at the, am I understanding the way that?
Yes.
Percentile, so like, if the 75th percentile might be the lesser qualified or the lower, earlier career, is it the lower pay?
It could, usually that's what it would be, but we don't have that, that definition.
But the 75th percentile is a lower salary number, is it?
It's higher.
It's higher. So at the lower end, the 25th percentile is a lower end salary. We are more competitive for, at the lower salary range? Which could be?
Entry level.
And then as, potentially, as people stay longer and therefore maybe get cost of living or progression in their salary, we become less competitive? Is that?
Sort.
Kind of?
Yes, I mean, but that, the level of experience in the job certainly does impact that. This is, I mean, this is basically as you would look at saying, we want to be at the 50th percentile from a target perspective.
Okay.
This is, this is coming up with what that 50th would look like, similarly with the 75th being there.
That's the picture from way up here. If we really wanted to analyze.
So I think we're going to move on.
For us, not with you. We would have to look at the years of service for all these people.
It's not years of service, it's mostly the time and job.
Well...
And I think as we, as we get a little further, and first thing, we're going to be able to show that this is an overall average of all the employees that were included in the study in all the different positions, and that, you know, what this looks like for individual employee, implications for individual job types, job families, career levels, it might look a little bit different.
Based on their, what did you say? I thought yours was, I should call it time and job, the same thing we made with...
But it's not. I mean, for us, it's just a statistical thing, in terms of where someone should be paid in the job, and like what's competitive and what's not. But it's up to you completely, from a philosophic perspective, how you would want to weigh overall tenure compared to maybe how long someone's been in a particular job.
I said that we might have more clarity when he continues, so let's get there.
Yeah.
So, I think these are fairly straightforward, although we will come back. So we've made some recommendations on, on improving the job titling structure. And a lot of that really has to do with, if you use a title, say like a coordinator, that it's either managing people, or it's not, you know? It's sort of reserved for that. And it's all about, you know, the perception of having a fair pay system. It's, it is sort of the reality, so it's all important from that. We have suggested also using, in particular, our system, because we already have all your jobs mapped to it. But it's a very straightforward approach, using job families and then career levels that allow you to, regardless of where the organization folks are, you can use the same leveling system across to try and get that sort of the approach to equity and have some, some basis for describing why someone's in a particular grade, why their job is. The, one of the questions, and I think it, looking at the peer group in particular, and the robustness of the data, two of the practical questions on the compensation philosophy, and there's some other nuance that goes into the overall policy, is that you really focus on the peers, but, but even broadly, more broadly than that, kind of the, the local public sector market. And local being, you know, somewhat to the north and then somewhat to the south, but trying to stay within public sector organizations and school systems, for sure. Part of that for us is, there are jobs, you know, even in this area study, that really don't have a comparable role in the general industry. And you really struggle trying to manage internal equity kinds of situations back. And then within that specific market, assuming that the data, I know for this study, but assuming future analyses, the data's as robust, would be really looking at the 50th percentile as you're setting your structure, you know, where to put that in. At the risk of opening another can, if it's at the 50th percentile, it would be half the folks in the market are below that, and half are above. So it's really right.
And to your...
Because we aim to 100% at the 50th percentile, is it working?
Exactly.
Okay, so we're not that far off. If you look at your numbers, 95...
From, from, from being at risk of losing people from the market, you're not, but that's where you have to look at it individually, and then what you're using to base.
But if we were aiming for a hundred and we're at ninety-five, you know, it's a lot better than aiming for a hundred and seventy-four.
So the only thing that I would, I would add to that, Ms. Healy.
Because that's seventy-five.
Is to say, we target the middle of the market, target the fiftieth percentile, but to your point, because we do have step grade scales, we take into consideration, um, comparable relevant years of service, a important question to establish is, at what point in the career progression, at what point of experience, et cetera, and role, is, are we expecting to hit that target? Do we want the beginning of the pay scale to be at that fifty percent mark? Do we want it to be somewhere middle of the pay scale, do we want it to be towards the top? And that's a philosophical decision to make as, as a division and as an employer, to where we would like to, uh, have that competitive point to hit. Because again, you know, if you were to look at individual employees and their comparison to the median market pay, you might find some, whoa, we have an employee that's a hundred and sixty percent of the fiftieth percentile, that employee also has thirty-three years of relevant experience, so that we might not say that's necessarily a problem. The reverse is also true, but in terms of how we, uh, this board wants to be forward with this, it would be establishing from a philosophical perspective, at what point in our pay scales do we want to target that fiftieth percentile?
Yeah, and that, and that, that decision was, because that didn't exist for the three other structures, we really didn't have a good sense, because you designed the structure around that to come up with what are you want to start with, the hiring rate. Um, I cannot see this, assuming you can, you can see it.
I'm surprised.
But what we're suggesting is, it's twenty steps, which, um, if you were in a school system, that might be a lot of steps, but certainly I think it's, it's consistent. Individual jobs get into grades. I'm just doing a quick check here, okay. Individual jobs get into grades based on their classification, so that classification is, uh, the job family and the level they're assigned to. Uh, that has been priced in the market, and, um, it has been established that, I believe, this is based on, um, setting that, uh, fiftieth percentile at step twelve. So it, it is, it is, um, allowing a few years to get people to, um, that, that fiftieth percentile, but then also allowing, some continued earnings above that to recognize time to job service.
So what's the difference between these steps? We've, we've started out with like two point four five, then we went to three percent, is there a standard percentage difference between the steps?
You know, I should have that off the top of my head, I do not have that. It's, it's going to be about two and a half to three percent.
Yeah, because we use both of those numbers in a house.
But. And it could be even less, because, um, twenty steps are quite a few, you know, for these, these roles, so the, the range from, um, entry to the, the maximum rate would tend to be a little bit less than if you're talking about.
But it's, but is uniform between among the steps?
I, I, I believe it, it's, it's uniform in the sense that there's a defined policy. Sometimes we will, um, apologize, I wish I could call it up, sometimes we'll have the percentage steps a little quicker, so like maybe three for the first few steps, and then two and a half, and then two.
No, I'm just curious for budget purposes.
It does, it's like a long grid.
Because we, we have, we have had something like this in a house, and the only reason we've gone away from it
Thank you for mentioning.
No, we just like.
Does it make you feel about it?
And the only reason we've gone away from it was because we couldn't afford to make these steps every year.
Every year, yeah.
And so employees would think they were owed steps when we just didn't have a step, so you might have a lot more experience at a certain level, because you didn't get a raise for three or four years.
It's two and a half.
It's just, it's, it's.
It's the ultimate success.
It's great if you can afford it.
Well, that's a big part of the communication challenge of a launch of a new system. It's, it is doing everything you can do to help folks understand that, um, the, the financial condition in any particular year affects movement of steps, but also affects whether the, the steps themselves, whether the whole structure moves.
I can actually fill in the, the data points that were the question, that, uh, the, uh, proposed scales would have the, uh, the fiftieth percentile of market, midpoint of market at step eight, that the steps would be at two per five, two point five percent.
Up to step eight?
Uh, at step eight would be the target to hit the fiftieth percentile.
Okay.
The steps from one to eight would have two point five, uh, percent increases, beyond step eight, it would be a two percent increase. So get up to that midpoint faster, and then.
When you presented this to the Fab, though, you indicated that, that steps do not necessarily mean.
Right.
Every year you get that, that, that it might be, there might be a merit piece along the way here as to whether you took your steps. Did I, am I remembering that from?
No, I, I think that's a, a possible way, as you talk about pay delivery, how to change pay, it's what you want to base, you know, each step to change on. So similarly, if someone's on a performance improvement plan, there's a case to have them stay on the same step, you know, because there's no progression. On the opposite side, if there's some clearly, clear way you can identify someone who's a superstar, maybe there's two steps. But it's all that clarity of, of identifying.
There's also the issue that we talked about at the Fab, um, about the distinction between, uh, are you doing, uh, a step to recognize longevity, to, uh, to recognize continued strong performance in a role versus a market adjustment, uh, for a scale? Because ultimately, year over year pay increases are taking those, uh, factors into account, and so, um, if we, if the board did want to pursue a twenty-step scale, this, it would be, you know, right now, our scales are constructed based on thirty, and then we have half-step, uh, approaches for people beyond that, so that we would need to revisit how people would be placed on this, that's, okay, that's a normal part of a process of, uh, moving through this. We would just then have to say, okay, so what would be our, um, consistent, implementable approach going forward to Ms. Healy's, uh, point? You know, one of the concerns that you face is, you know, can you confidently adopt, you know, consistent year-over-year rules of what step advancement might look like when you're uncertain of the fiscal environment? And taking into account that component again, that's, what's the market adjustment piece versus the longevity piece? So those are, you know, those are policy decisions that the board to make.
At Fab, was the recommendation that this be like part of a work, like a dedicated work session around budget?
Yeah, this would have to be a, I think.
Because I know like across the street, when they're talking about pay, they do actually differentiate, this is a raise, this is a step, and this is a market pay adjustment.
Correct.
And they've factored those three pieces in, and whatever we decide, I think we need to use the same language that we all know exactly.
What we're doing for both this scale and the license scale.
Yes, I mean, for all the things, but if that, if it's language that the county is already using with success and understanding, I think it's only in our best interest to adopt the same language.
I also think it makes more sense in explaining it to the board supervisors, well, this is our market adjustment, this is our step, and, you know.
Yeah.
So I think then we're using the same.
But first, we have to adopt.
So can I just ask, do you have certain job titles or positions, um, associated with each of these eleven grades?
Yes.
Okay.
Keep going, Paige.
Is that relevant?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, they're, they're not listed in this detail.
Oh.
Oh.
But I'm, so we had something working with demonstration. The, um, I, I'm not sure what, what Stafford County has by way of pay system, but, um, there are some common definitions that, um, we, we work really hard with clients to help them categorize things correctly, so maybe if the county's not doing it quite the, the right way, it's a way for you to leave the charge, um, there's really only two major potential increases. One would be something that's, that represents kind of broad market change, longer-term structure, and that's the, something you would use to adjust this entire piece, uh, percentage-wise, that's two percent max, something like that. And then there's the, the step piece, which would replace merit, I mean, and, unless you put in something, that would be that equivalent for an individual piece. So when you get into market adjustments, it's really going to be something that's a promotion-related, so it's going to be a reclass that's based on someone's job changing. The market could move for one particular job, it's, it's really not that common.
We've seen that with transportation.
Yeah, that's, that's a good example, right, but that's also where you start to change the grades of jobs, so it's, it's a promotional increase or it's a, a reclassification.
And that's where our peers come in, because if we're all competing for the same pool of qualified individuals, that could drive, you know, that.
Oh, absolutely.
Percentage number. Up, most likely.
And, and also in the work that we've done with, around this, um, if I were to go back several years to the, um, departmental reorganization, that was put into place for fiscal year twenty-three, uh, one of the driving factors there was to flatten position titles and, uh, and doing that, what we lost was a lot of the market nuance that was relevant for industry, uh, as a result, so, um, the work with, and, and Mr. Burghardt can speak to this as well, with the, uh, classification system that they've recommended, that they've used to pressure test our positions, brings that piece back to bear, um, to say, yes, uh, scope of authority, scope of influence, um, scope of impact on the vision, supervisory responsibility, qualifications needed, years of experience, but then also now, let's take into account what the relative industry is. When you take each of those factors into account, it's how you end up with where a job would be placed onto one of these pay scales based on available classifications.
So let's, seeing this, this is gonna take a lot of discussion moving forward, let's, let's get through the presentation, then we can bring this back.
So, um, because we did assign all of the jobs to grades, uh, we were able to compare, uh, employees, um, their actual pay to where they fell in the, the range, so we weren't really looking at the, the percentage of who is on which step, because that's going to be a separate, um, exercise. But what we're showing you, this is some of the frequency distribution, so, uh, the range location is the first column, so you can see we have the ninety to one hundred, ten percent in the shaded blue, and we're saying, if the actual pay is within that range, you really don't have too big of a competitive risk, it doesn't mean that person's being paid equitably, but it means they're probably not going to leave. Who knows, though, sometimes people have all sorts of reasons. And an extra, yeah, correct, an extra five percent is enough to say, okay. So then the competitive posture for us is, if it's less than eighty percent of that step eight, um, thank you for correction, on that, at less than step eight, um, we would say that is less than competitive. The eighty to ninety percent is low end, I mean, it's less than competitive, but it's close, and as long as it's someone who's new, we're in the job, it's probably, um, in good shape. And then you get into the, the higher pieces. We didn't have, this, this actually does reflect, I believe, and, and actually we might want to go with the average service we have. A lot of this is also looking at how long they've been in the job. Right.
That's right, the average service reflects, um, um, a point of their overall service time in Stafford County along with their, uh, weighted factor of their time in their permanent role, so this is meant to take into account their credited service that placed them, uh, on their scale. So what you're seeing here is that those with lower levels of, um, credited service are below that competitive range, and those with higher levels are above the competitive range, and I think that kind of gives the sense that our current pay ranges might be too wide, um, because they're starting too low and maybe going higher.
Yeah, what's your, and that, and that's part of it, and I think you can also look overall, is, we set, we set the structure at step eight because just definitionally, after eight years, um, we would expect someone who's hired the, the entry to, to make it to the fiftieth. So what we're seeing, though, is, is you have folks with a lot of experience, and it's still only that ninety-five point something percent, so, so on its face, it seems like you're competitive, but because you have such a tenure and experienced staff, it's actually less than competitive. As we look at the structure, you have, um, overall, um, you're very close at ninety-eight point four percent. But if you look at, uh, twenty-three point one, quarter of the staff are, um, below eighty percent.
Look at their average service, though, isn't that?
It's still.
Individual, though, because they're making less money because they have less years of, I know, and I'm just trying to rationalize it.
Oh, yeah, no, you're right, you're right, but it's just.
If they had higher service, then they probably would have a higher percentile, would they not?
Except you have, you have those, the average service of eight point three years, they're still eighty to ninety percent. There's still almost twenty percent of employees who, again, definitionally, we would think would be closer to that fiftieth percentile or, or be well within the competitive range, who are not.
And what's the competitive range again?
That's ninety to one ten, it's the shaded blue.
Ninety to ninety-five.
Okay, ninety, but that says low end, what does that mean?
That means they're below that, so you have twenty, twenty percent of your employees are below the competitive range, but their average service is eight point three years.
A long time to the ground.
Which is where you would expect it to be, right in the mid, but that's a fifty percentile.
We'd expect.
Really, the goal should be that everybody should be in the competitive range, is that really the goal?
I mean, you probably want to have sixty, seventy percent in the competitive range, long tenure, folks, people who've been in the job would be higher. Some of it depends on how much hiring and how much turnover you have, you know, if your average service is, if you break it down, people who are under one year, um, you know, you would hope that they're, um, closer to eighty percent, eighty-five, but that's just timing, right? So, and I'm just pointing this out, because this is where I think the, the finance group, sort of, there's some more work to do as you look at where people are paid, and then how to work through that process. Uh, certainly, uh, as you're looking at this chart, this is looking at the comparatio, so this is, uh, for a particular functional area. As we assign them to, uh, job families, functions are just a, a group of families, and, um, we compare the actual pay for people who are in jobs that are assigned to these functions to step eight on the structure, and that gives us this, this CR or the comparatio, which is actual pay divided by step eight. So you can see, uh, for contracts and procurement, just use that as an example, uh, there's only, there's four people, so it's a smaller sample. Their pay is at step eight overall, which you would think is they're right at your fiftieth percentile target. However, their average service is twenty-three point six years, and maybe, that, maybe that's an anomaly, but they shouldn't, but, but maybe, shouldn't they be at a higher rate? They should be higher than that.
You said that this driven by market conditions, for example, transportation is highly competitive. At one point, we were struggling to get drivers.
But this isn't all, this isn't drivers.
No, but, it, it, the transportation is a hundred and ten point eight percent.
But it's seventeen years.
Yeah, then, but we also have longevity.
It is, it, it's all of this from your actual pay, if you think about how people get paid and why they get paid what they do, all of this, there's, there's historic reasons why people are compared to market the way they are.
But is it also kind of cyclical, like, if you take safety and emergency management, it's only five years of service, the average is seventy-six point seven, making it the lowest, and because it's probably the lowest, we have higher turnover, which means we only have five years of services average, is that?
For seventy-six point seven, I would expect you to have like a year and a half of service. I mean, to be, to be fair, and, and I think part of that is.
Oh, so they like us, they stick around because they like us, like us.
You know, a lot of these do have more than ten years of service.
And I, and I would say that there are any number of things where there's nuance in this, uh, where, you know, that, that job category is one where there's some nuance as to why the employees that are in that group might have lower levels of experience as well, so that might be something that, you know, could typically bring back to whenever the longer discussions is.
Okay.
But this, but, but for me, this is the hard part with these sorts of studies, particularly when there's a conscientious desire to, to have folks paid correctly, because it's, there's a lot of discretion, there's a lot of subjectivity, even determining what someone's years of experience in a particular job are, and equivalencies and some of that, so, um, it is, it is definitely important.
So their average service is in that particular position, is that?
Correct, that's, that's.
Okay, so it's not just service.
It's not service time overall, it's, it's, it's a blended number, but we can get into that.
I'll add, um, since Dr. Warner brought up the student transportation number, that is somewhat directly tied to the work we did in transportation, because our, our folks that are paid in transportation office are somewhat based off of, if our bus drivers are driven up, then the office staff that are coming from a driver in to maybe some sort of office manager role or area manager role, they're going to be a little bit higher, too, and so I think it's a lot of experience, when you say a hundred and ten, but it was tied to some of the work we did a few years ago to make our bus driver pay competitive.
Yeah, and then I wonder if student health isn't, because we have contract services for some of that, like psychologists and stuff, which I know cost is a bit.
But they're not.
They weren't part of the study.
They wouldn't be supported.
Oh, they weren't, okay.
They would be licensed.
The other thing to keep in mind with this, and I'm afraid I glossed over it, this is, this is a future projection. And I apologize for not bringing this up. This is for twenty twenty-seven, just looking at realism and implement information. So this is actually projecting the market out an additional year. So in some of these comparisons, you should be below market, just based on typically. So we talked about the pay adjustments and certainly there's the rationale potentially of factoring in some type of performance, but it's really, there's, there's sort of a, for this group, there's a general increase that would be structure related that, you know, kind of like the rising tide, that the entire thing would do. And depending on how many people you have at the maximum rate, if any, generally, that's usually the group of employees that are looking for that particular increase. And then beyond that, certainly, there would be step increases potentially. So just if we look at this on a preliminary basis, it would be eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately on an annualized basis to bring the base pay rates up to the structured entry points. So for those, those group that were the below eighty percent and probably some of the even ninety to, excuse me, the eighty to ninety percent, they're below the minimum. They're below the entry rate of the twenty twenty-seven structure. And then if we wanted to just put employees then on the step that's closest to wherever they are currently, it would be an additional hundred and fifty-nine thousand per year to do that. So those two actions are, would be common implementation actions. The next steps beyond that would be to say, so you're on step six, should you be on step ten? Or should you be on step five?
So how do you determine that?
So that's the next step that was through my office is taking certifications. And one of the things that we have that is among our action steps over the next several months, as we're preparing for the board retreat in November, is developing a number of implementation options. And alongside each of those implementation options, we'll come along with it the walls of the road of how we would make those determinations.
So I'm, you know, I'm very concerned about what the budget's gonna look like next year with opening three schools. So are there things that we can do with this recommendation that, like, we paid for this study to be done? If we don't have money, is there still something we can do to make progress?
And that's, and that's the implementation scenarios that we'll be developing.
That we'll be talking about.
And putting people on a step doesn't necessarily reflect years of service.
Because I would love to have the money to actually implement this, but I, the reality is opening three schools. And then my other question is, where do our licensed staff fall? Are they at the fiftieth percent time?
I believe that our licensed scales are going to be subject for FAB next week.
Okay.
Or, right.
I'm just curious, just knowing what Prince William's salaries look like versus ours and Spotsylvania. Unlike, if I'm gonna do this for this group, how much is it gonna cost me to do it for the actual majority of our staff?
And I will say for FAB next week, we won't have the percentiles, but we were asked to kind of take a look at some of our comparative divisions and take a look at that for teachers and administrators.
If you haven't done already, can you please have this on the list of topics to consider for the retreat agenda?
It is already.
I thought so.
To implement this, as you say, getting someone on a step is not reflecting years of experience. The one thing we suggest, though, is if you do implement this for twenty twenty-seven, people's pay is gonna be higher. So the eight fifty-two, five thirty-eight will go down. It won't be such a big piece. But making sure everybody's at least at the entry level.
So it sounds like there needs, there's a Patrick department process that needs to happen before a board process needs to happen.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, that's us developing scenarios for considerations.
Can we, can we also look at the ones that are significantly under, you know, the ones that are at the seventy-nine? But percent, I mean, realistically, we can't do it all, you know, and we're gonna have a plan. I would like to have a plan to address, you know, the ones that are in the significantly.
But to Dr. Chase's point, I mean, I don't think we need a study to tell us that our licensed staff are under, anyway. We know that. Do we wanna just know about what percentage? Like, do you wanna?
How close are we to their way of the competitive scale?
I have, I have a, I have a study and plan for one.
Okay.
And I don't have a study and a plan for the other.
Okay.
So do I then say, because I have a study and a plan, I will take care of this group? But because I don't have a study and a plan, I won't take care of this other group? That's my concern.
I also just, I'm sorry.
No, I, I hear what Dr. Chase is saying, but I think, to be fair, we have paid a significant amount of we've time and attention to that license scale, at least since I've been on the board, and trying to bring them up without a study and a report on that end as well. And so I feel like service staff actually really did need this report and this process, kind of, just like for us to look into where they're at. Because we've had a harder time, I think, advocating, since we can't advocate for both. We've had to, you know, have mom and dad fight over who gets fed at the dinner table, right? Over and over, year after year. So for me, this is a big step in letting the service staff know that we see them and we understand, because we have put a lot of time and effort into really prioritizing the, and I don't know what if it'll turn into phases or steps or cycles of the moon later on, but I just suggest that whatever it is, it is, I mean, I hate to say, but it needs to really come down to basic. It needs to look very basic on paper because it is exceptionally complex to people to really kind of understand what they're looking at and how it works. And even hearing, like, I don't come in at step one if I'm a first-year teacher, and then the next year I'm step two, and the next year I'm step three, and I'm automatically just climbing. Like, if it's a range of years of service that are tied to a step and those kinds of things, some of that stuff just needs to be more easily available, because I don't think people understand it.
Well, yeah, I mean, for this, there'll be a definite policy, and I just, I mean, but for some of the other.
That's okay.
I mean, from a communications perspective, I think he has a, they have a good handle on it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the study, how it gets launched, you know, how it sits with other groups and all of that. You have to look at this group.
And I'll say that as an initial step, and I do wanna be cognizant of time. I know that there's a full agenda after this. But there are some initial steps to go with this. That what we have been doing over the last several weeks, since the presentation of the FAB, is that we've been doing briefings with each department, giving them an overview of the study and giving them a sense of what our next steps will be to get some, solicit some initial feedback. There is a great deal of interest from amongst our department administrators to dive into the job description work. And so we're looking forward to hopefully continuing to work with Bolton this fall on that job description.
Have we paid for that work, like, or is that gonna be another?
We have not, we have not paid for it yet, so.
But, but it's gonna be different. We're not writing job descriptions.
Right, because you don't like to do that, take your feet.
Don't give them the second part.
So do we have, do we have any English, any English?
I was paying attention.
It's called ChatGPT.
Yes.
No, oh, you can't.
Well, okay, I just, I'm just wondering.
Why would you do so many?
But, but that is the first of the many processes that are gonna go through, including the job description revisions to have the terminology and descriptions more accurately reflect not just duties, but also the compensable factors that develop.
So is that coming with FAB? Now that I'm on FAB.
All right, so, yeah, as he said, that food is available.
Okay, noticeably missing from your study that you did, was anybody that was in this classification range? Like, you stay administrative, you stay directors, but you didn't include anybody that's actually a part of this study? Is there a reason why?
Oh, in terms of the initial consultations?
Yeah.
So that's an excellent question. I know food is here, so it comes, it may make sense, Mr. Burghardt, you can say a little bit about what those department consultations were.
We really try to get to what the nature of the jobs are and what the intent is. So we're not trying to get a sense from employees in this instance around their perception of pay and some of those sorts of things. So we really do focus in a much higher light, you know, because we're trying to.
I will say, separate from the consultations they did with each department to get a sense of the work that that department, that the operational functions within schools needed to complete. Alongside of that, because we will rely on the job descriptions as the unit of comparison for the market analysis, we also reached out to all employees that were in positions that were among those studied and asked them for feedback on their current job description to say.
Oh, that's what, that's what I was curious about, because I didn't see that.
Right, because that wasn't part of what's Bolton's work does. Did, we did that as our part of that to help run a parallel process of what pieces do we need to look at.
Where are we on job description and that sort of thing?
And to identify whether there are things where, like, oh, this is a place where we need to do a much deeper look once we got this analysis back.
And what we're asking them to do versus what they are doing.
If, if we see the employee has a very big, different sense of perception of what their duties are compared to what the job description has, and if what came back into the study was a recommendation that looks very different from what our current compensation structure has, that tells us that's a place we need to look more deeply.
Okay. That's what, that's what I was.
It also gave us an opportunity to get some helpful feedback of places where we've collapsed job titles.
Yes.
Again, that was.
Is that working or not?
Um, is it working or not? And so there are places where we should actually, maybe it doesn't have a compensation effect. Maybe the positions are still at the same pay grades.
Right.
Where we tease out a couple of different job titles for the sake of clarity, for the sake of clear explanation.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. That made me feel better, because I'm like.
So our next item is gonna be budget priorities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Lot of descriptions today, thank you.
So are we gonna get started, or are you waiting for everybody to get back from?
We need one, one more person here, right?
Yeah.
You can get set up, though, if you're set up.
Yeah, there's not a lot to set up, so it's good.
Well, no, it's not. I mean, the compensable factors we use, I mean, they were, they were put in place.
They are pretty much the same.
I get that. I get that. I just wanna make sure that.
Six trailers at a school versus an underpopulated school, they're just gonna, based on volume alone, the numbers are gonna be different.
Right, but I just wanna make sure that since we're now putting it as a goal and it's out there.
With redistricting.
I don't think people know the differentiated, the allocations that we hear now.
Well, then they have the attention, it's in a budget priority, our entire, our entire term on, in office.
Welcome to, welcome to September 14th. Oh, yeah, that's my only concern. I didn't have any problem with any wording.
Now, is this gonna be for the schools after the redistricting, with the redistricted population? So we'll know which ones?
Yes.
And do we know which would be title versus?
Yeah.
And are we gonna do the rolling title, or are we gonna just?
No, I thought we got away with it.
We did.
No, I just, I don't know. I'm just asking, but we.
We did it, we were the break, got a thing and.
We checked with, we checked with EBE and how we were able to do that. And even the way that you went ahead and made decisions around title last year, you built in that monitoring year or this year, so you made that decision so that wouldn't, so that they wouldn't continue to receive title funds after redistricting. So you did that in advance.
Okay, all right, yeah, because that's, we had that problem after the last redistricting.
You and I have discussed that, and I've had that.
Yeah, that was a huge problem.
We had schools that had, you know, that would never have qualified, that were still title schools because they were all.
Yeah.
And really, I think, as you, as you adopt your budget priorities, that helps to guide me as I put together a budget and present to you based on these, these priorities. And then, you know, obviously, when we present the budget, when I present the budget, I can give you some dollars around these, but until we present the budget, I think it becomes a little bit difficult with just the actual dollars. But it does definitely guide our work and our budget, in the budget proposal.
So I do wanna add, you know, really the change to this year, there's a little bit of wording tweaks in the descriptions, but we also just added references to the strategic plan goals that stay tied to. So really wanted to make sure it was tied to a strategic plan.
Beautiful.
And I was counting, and I noticed strategic plan four has the least number of, it shows up the least. Just saying that.
Because it's free.
It's an odd thing that I did, but I did.
Don't we have five, though?
We have four.
We have four, okay. Mine, I think, was a good one. All right, good. They're all there.
So I did hear some conversation around combining two and four, and I just wanna make sure we have clarity if that's consensus of the board. We're happy to do that. We just, I heard that suggestion a couple times, but I just.
Well, both of them are similar. They talk about ESOL students. I think it's just securing the resources to address academic performance.
So differentiated school site funding is a tool to do that, so it makes sense.
Right, that follows the student population. And then, again, addressing specific issues like it does in two, which is absenteeism.
Does anyone have a problem with combining them?
No.
Let's, let's combine them and then combine.
So personally, I'm thinking we actually keep two and then we add some of the background information under two to include the differentiated schools.
Exactly, right, right.
Okay.
And for me, I don't really want us highlighting ESOL after hiring thirty-plus ESOL teachers that year.
Just, I just think, focus on student, individual population, school population. So then it's whatever their needs are based on, you know, their students.
Yeah, we gotta meet any two of them.
So moving from budget priorities to CIP?
All right, can you make sure Jason and Matt?
While Mr. Towery and Mr. Townsend.
Oh, hey, Mr. White.
Join us.
Seen you in ages.
Yeah, Mr. White.
You don't want that, so that's.
Make up some time after the first. So we are kicking off our CIP process, our whole FY twenty-seven budget process. We talked about budget priorities for the operating budget, shifting over to our capital improvement plan. I've shared a draft budget calendar with y'all previously that showed that we are kind of getting an extra month for the CIP this year. We realized we're, have been adopting the CIP really early. It's before we're able to finalize our enrollment projections. So then we run into this situation where we have old enrollment projections and new enrollment projections coming out after the CIP's been adopted. So we were able to work with the county. They weren't really using our information yet. So like, hey, let's wait a month. Let's get better information to the school board to make those final decisions off of. So we have like an extra month, but it still has a lot of information to digest and potential, if there's any adjustments, we need time to make those. So we still wanna start the process early. We discussed it with Fab C in August and coming to the school board in August as well. And almost every meeting between now and November, we're gonna be coming back and seeing if there's any changes.
So instead of improving it in October, we're improving it in November.
Yes, I am.
November, yeah. Well, we don't meet with them until January anyways on it, right?
Right?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chris. Oh.
All right, so just, here's our agenda for today. So we're gonna talk a little bit about just refreshing everybody on the CIP process, how it works year to year, and then we'll go over some of the updates from last year and some key changes for this year that we're proposing moving forward. And then we wanted to hone in a little bit on some things that we think should be a focus for the board this year. And then we do have a couple handouts that you should have in front of you here that have the draft large capital list as well as the draft three R list here in front of you. Of course, this is just one small component of the larger CIP, but it's the most looked at kind of document from the CIP. So moving forward here, this is the wrong one. There we go. Okay, so this is really, I think the board is familiar with this, but for those members of the public who may also be watching or just anybody in general, it's important to remember that, as Chris pointed out earlier, we have the operating side of the budget, but then on the capital side of the budget, we really have two main components. We have the large CIP projects, which is anything from, you know, our new big construction, the high schools and elementary schools. We do have some large replacements in there, as well as our, what we term critical systems and restoration projects. These are larger projects, something, think of the magnitude of five, six, seven, eight million dollars or more, right? And then we have our. And then we have our three R projects, which are, is a much longer list of projects, but it's all the, what we'd say are smaller dollar items, not that five billion is a small dollar item, but in terms of the buckets of all the different paving and roofing projects, safety and security projects, those types of things. Right, those are gonna fall into our three R categories. There's a variety of inputs, obviously, that come into the CIP process, everything from our leadership team, principals, folks on the cabinet, obviously, but the board, the community members, and then we're also talking with our maintenance team, we're looking at facility data, work order data. This is really gonna focus for us the last two years to start building out the asset management side of our CIP program, to make sure that we have data that will help us as we go through and try to determine, make decisions on whether or not to fix this roof first or that roof first, and bring that information in as part of the process.
Do you do like a facility study on every building every year, or is that roof paving?
It's on a cyclical basis, so not every building every year, we have them all on a five-year cycle, but they were, so they were all recently done within the last three to four years.
Okay.
And then, we're trying to spread those out a little bit more to get them a little more frequently, but they are on a five-year cycle. So, I think there's, it's just important to remember that the CIP is dynamic and living, right? So, we're always looking down the road, ten, fifteen, twenty years out even, in our minds, different things, although the CIP is really reflecting that ten-year term. We're thinking longer term, but then we're also looking at the medium-term items that are coming up in that five, seven-year window. And then when we get to the short term, that's really the time period where we want to be very precise with our budgets, our estimates, the scope, things of that nature. The things out in that middle, or certainly in the longer term, tend to have much more variation to them in terms of price, scope, schedule, those types of things. Also, we, every year, we spend a year doing the CIP, we kind of joke about that, right? Like, we spend one year every year doing the CIP and then turn around and spend another year doing the CIP. But the cadence is, is important to remember, how we march through this CIP process. So, for example, we just started, we're in August here now, so we're the second line here, we are now in the middle of what we'd say would be year zero of our current FY twenty six, the FY twenty seven CIP that you all just approved last spring. And so, we're here speaking to you today about the FY twenty seven CIP. As we know, we'll go through ultimately through November, January, February, you all will work with the board supervisors to come to some consensus on that. Right around January, February, we get the enrollment accommodation plan, and we start on our end the planning for next year's CIP to be sitting in front of you next August, a year from now. So, we begin at that point engaging with principals and other stakeholders, and then working towards getting to next August at this point. So, there is overlap between the different CIP processes, as we're approving one, we're in the middle of developing the next one. And that's important as we get into some of the input and remembering when we should or should not adjust, make adjustments to our CIP. So, this is the schedule that we have moving forward over the next few months. We're here today at the board work session on August twenty sixth, and we'll be back in two weeks to talk with the board. In more in-depth, a little bit about a couple subjects, which I'll go over here in a minute. In particular, we want to touch on, at that September ninth meeting, modulators, a little bit more about Hartwood Elementary School, what to do with that site long-term, the Rising Star Day School program, elementary school twenty, and middle school nine. So, looking at some of the key projects that the board approved, board supervisors approved last year, we've seen a real, we've seen a lot of progress the last couple of years with our three R spending. And I think this has been a real win for, for the division as a whole, I think that this board has appropriately put a lot of great focus there. The CIP advisory committee's been a huge part of that as well, I think we get to hear from them in a couple weeks on some additional input that they have into our scoring process moving forward. They've been doing some great work, we're excited for them to bring that to you. Also, the Hartwood rebuild, very excited, that is now under design, we just actually had another one of our weekly meetings this morning. We're getting ready within the next probably four to five weeks to have those plans across the street at the county for first review. North Stafford Fine Arts Wing, we've already had kickoff meetings on that, we've got some concepts that we've already developed with the architect. Middle School Nine, it's sitting out there in twenty thirty-eight, but it's, it's on the CIP now with some approval coming. It's kind of crazy to think about, and that's one of the things we want to start talking with you all about at the September ninth work session, but that's on there now, and it's, it's got approved funding, and then the bus parking, which was also a huge win. And then, of course, our, some of our critical systems projects, this is something that the board put some effort into, starting a couple of years ago, to pull some of those phased three R projects out of the three R list and get them into large capital projects. We've seen that now starting, we just started design on Rodney Thompson Middle School for that effort, and we're excited, of course, for Gail Hampton Oaks and Wyoming Creek to come along there too.
So, do we know yet when Drew will be put out to bid?
Drew, we anticipate should be out, let me see, what month are we?
Near August. Near August.
End of August.
Yeah, so we, I will go back and double check and verify this, but I believe Drew is scheduled to be bid at some time in the spring of next year. And I can get you a more exact date on that.
Okay, so, and the?
Because, our, I'm sorry, our goal is to break ground on that in summer, summertime next year.
Twenty seven, okay.
Uh, no, twenty sixth.
Twenty six, okay, and, and the CIP process, like the conditional use permitting, is that, like, I know you said that was happening this month, has it gone through yet, or we're still waiting on that?
We are currently scheduled for the September twenty first, twenty fourth, it's a, it's a work session with the planning commission in September and anticipating a final work session with the board supervisors in October.
I just had, this is probably a final question more so than you, but I see that middle school nine is actually projected to be above high school seven, but I'm wondering if that's, I mean, one of the reasons for building Drew the way we were in the size and capacity is that we thought it would take pressure off of our middle schools that we wouldn't need the middle school as soon. But I do have to wonder, especially with the age of North Stafford, if the high school seven might be something that we have to move up and swap those.
And it's, it's a great point, actually, one of the things we want to talk about in here with North Stafford is doing an interior project on that school to consider extending the life of that school as much as we reasonably can to get, to get that closer to that. We're estimating twenty forty, twenty forty-five, I'm sorry, twenty forty-five, twenty fifty mark for when that school would be offline. But, so that's something to keep in mind longer term, but in terms of middle school nine, I think ultimately, we want to take a look at you all with where we need the seats, right? Where, is it in the north, is it in the south, and start taking a look at that from an operations perspective as well. So, we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more at the September ninth.
And if we can find land.
Yeah, that's the other reason, I think it's really.
I see just a huge number of permits to use land for data centers, and it's not clear whether we have land available for schools, so.
We can put some of our kids there to learn amongst all of the.
They're big enough.
Yeah, that's true.
That's one of the reasons, and September ninth, you know, we need to start getting direction from the board on, hey, where do we, general location of where we want that next, middle school nine and high school seven, so we can start searching for land, right, and we'll, we'll start up our joint land acquisition committee and then start targeting that.
That's my concern, is that given we have a very narrow urban services corridor, that we should be looking at these land acquisitions now. If we have, because I'm sure that like for the middle school, there's, it's anticipated it'll be out of the Hartwood area, because we have.
Well, my question then is, and I don't know if this is like legally allowed, can we make a CIP item a land bank? Like, can you give us five million dollars, if that's the threshold for a CIP project? Can we work with the county to make a CIP item in the budget where we are committing to purchasing lands that, you know, obviously would be jointly approved for future purchases before any slash all of these future development projects.
The county actually already established land bank funding a couple of years ago, and so there is money set aside, and really, they won't, their policies don't allow them to approve a CIP project unless we have the land, you know, they want us to plan in advance, so we're working with their staff now, and that's part of the reason why, hey, we want direction on middle school nine, high school seven now, so we're not searching for that when it gets approved, you know, the year before, we need to have it in advance.
In, in searching, I mean, I know that they have it, I don't know what the policy says, but if they are approving something that's going to happen in the next five or ten-year cycle, can part of that timeline be buying land now when it's cheaper, so that we have it?
And available.
And it also.
Right, I mean, my, I have concerns just that Drew did not go in our first, like, our preferred location, right?
Exactly.
So, it's going where it's going, and high, elementary school nineteen, that we stole a lot from Brookpoint to put that elementary school there.
Didn't know enough for a big one.
So, I'm just concerned about, we're talking about all these projects, but do we really, and I'm not an expert on where land is available in Stafford County, but I'm concerned that, that we've got all these projects, but then we're gonna, again, be picking maybe less desirable sites because we don't have.
But I also want to see, I mean, I think it was critical to my thought process in, in location of nineteen, is Lionel's projections.
Right.
Because, you know, it, again, we've done this so many times, putting schools where we don't always need them, but have a spot. And I would like to make sure that we're choosing a location based on Lionel's projections of either, you know, time travel or growth or whatever it is. I just want to make it make sense, not just like, oh, here's a spot of land, we'll just make this one there and figure it out.
Well, maybe I shouldn't do this in open meeting, but. What I, I've been. Hold on, I'm getting ready to stop. No, no, I'm just saying, I don't want to make it one of our.
Stop, stop.
I'm on the other side. I'm just saying, you know, I've been, I've been looking at a lot of things from the county's perspective, and looking at land, and looking at applications, et cetera. There is a lot of land, it's not true that there's not a lot of land in Stafford, the bottom line is, we ain't got no money to pay for it, to buy that land. But there is land.
Right.
So, I think if we could start having meaningful conversations with the people across the street, then we can really start looking at what we can afford.
I agree.
You know what I mean, and what we're willing to afford.
But, can I also just say, to Dr. Chase's point, there's currently land, but these data center conversations are out of control.
I never said that.
So, well, I'm just, but I'm saying, that's where, they're, they're looking to suck up all of that land, so whereas it's available now for us, and then, how safe would it be to put a school near a data center? I mean, let's be realistic, like, we have to get, also have to have data center conversation as well, if that's what we're gonna do, because they're eating up land left and right, and, and there's just gonna be no place for us to go.
That's kind of my point in saying, if we know we need.
Well, and we're with services corridor is small.
That's the, that's a big difference.
It's so, even if there's land available, it may not serve our purposes, because if there's no water and electricity again, so we're there. Propane.
So, one of the, one of the things that.
We already know it's subject tanks and wells and like, so let's not do that, yeah.
One of the things I think that we've been working towards the last couple of years, and we're getting ready, we're looking at a proposal for it now from, from a company to help us develop a facility master plan. And the facility master plan, because I think what we're describing here is, in the CIP cycles, sometimes we're looking at that two to three to five-year cycle, and that's kind of what we have a good feel for in terms of costs and enrollment projections, those types of things. But we need to be looking twenty years out, thirty years out for our facility master plan, and start to think a little bit more about like, this facility, North Stafford, needs to be replaced in twenty years, let's say. So, when we go to replace North Stafford, do we replace it in eighteen years and put it at this location so we can use it as flex space for two years while we're doing these renovations over at Cape Waller Barrett, and Moncur might be up for renovation then? So, those are the types of things that we're missing right now in our process, that a facility master plan will help us bring to that larger conversation. And a big part of that is the land acquisition component, right? And so, we've been working towards that the last two years, I think we will get there. It's just, it's taking some time and we're getting these processes in place, I think we've made a lot of progress the last two years, and, and I think, you know, this year we're taking another significant step forward. In terms of working through, and these are staff's recommendations, kind of what we're proposing here, ultimately, the board obviously has to do this, but a couple key changes that we're proposing to this year's CIP, one is for the Mountain View High School to come from a phased component project in the three R list, that it was kind of partially there before, and now as we've moved a year or two ahead in the three R, it's fully shown itself up in the three R list. So, pulling that into our large capital list. Also, we've made a couple adjustments to the Colonial Forge bus parking in terms of some of our numbers there, pretty minor, I think it was about a million dollars overall in the total scope of things. We have continued annually to reevaluate that three R project list, like I said, I think that the CIP advisory committee's got some good feedback that they're gonna bring us in a couple of weeks on the process for that moving forward, but some changes there. And then we, right now, we're proposing that the elementary school rebuilds for Thalmett, Stafford, Ferry Farming Draft and get adjusted out one year based on what we're seeing in the overall facility conditions, and, as well as just to try to keep our overall capital spending in a reasonable realm. And then, again, as I mentioned before, talking about the North Stafford High School interior renovation.
So, you're talking about moving the, currently the Mountain View Critical Systems is slated for FY thirty-six, or thirty-seven?
Correct.
You're talking about moving it up, or is that where you want it?
We're bringing it onto this list, it was previously on this list in four, five, just in components, we're on the number in that one.
Okay, oh, okay.
And then, so.
But is that a, is that a over multiple, like how, how long is that project, or how?
So, most of these projects, like for a high school, for, for a critical system renovation, it's probably gonna take us about two years, but.
Okay.
Two, two to three, but right now it's taking us seven to eight, because we're breaking up over seven, seven to eight summers.
So, we can afford it. Yeah, okay.
And at times, it's just not fully being done, that's actually part of what happened with North Stafford interior work. We did all the mechanical work, and somehow in there, a lot of the interior work.
Got bumped.
Got bumped and ran out of money, and so we're realizing that now, we need to look at this.
So, are we finished with Brookpoint's work?
Yeah.
The HVAC will finish up, so I get lost in the phases.
Sorry.
Next summer, I believe, right, next summer, I think the final phase of HVAC at Brook will be done.
Then we can start over.
And then start the interior work.
Then we go to the next high school.
So.
And I, and I think part of the conversation we would like to have in September, I think we're bringing back on modulators, and so there is some thought around, how do we, how can we do these projects?
Capitalize on them?
Right, potentially using some modulars to swing space, might allow us to do them, you know, quicker and not spread them out so long, so there may be some options.
I remember he talked to us about that before, said that's gonna be interesting.
So, in a couple of weeks, the CIP advisory committee will come and do their presentation for us.
Correct.
We will bring this back again, so, you know, we have some time to ask our questions and have any conversations that are necessary.
Correct.
When is the three-on-three?
This week. Thursday.
Thursday.
Today. Do we have, maybe, would you like to add a land bank?
They've already taken stuff off.
Yeah, they've already taken stuff off.
Really?
Yeah.
I know.
Let me, let me just, because I want to be sensitive.
We have a land bank, it's just not, we haven't.
They, I mean, they said they, they meant, me, maybe?
Yeah.
You did?
There are topics that people don't want to talk about.
Well, wait a minute, we're, it's.
It's our meeting.
We had to have an agreement for us to talk about it, right?
No. They just don't.
It's CIP's on there though.
Well, hell, y'all, talk about it.
My only point is.
Offline, because we have a land bank.
We have an agenda for Thursday, the twenty eighth, the meeting, that meeting is set.
Daniel, where, step up.
I think the land bank is definitely something we need to discuss, but it's not going on this agenda.
But, I was gonna say, well, and now this is three-on-three.
So, next, next year, it can be a major event.
The meeting will be again for another year.
We do have another, the next meeting is scheduled, joint schools working committee is December.
We'll save it, we'll get it handled.
Too close to the holidays, too, okay, kids.
Yeah.
Felt harsh.
Okay, so, Jason, if you could just highlight, I think we've just got probably a few minutes left, so I don't know what the highlight you want to make out of this.
So, again, we'll be back in two weeks, some of what we'll be talking about there is listed here, and I'll go with that in a minute. But again, the focus, we believe, for this year should be on adjusting the project timing for Rising Star, we have a difference in our time schedule versus with the county. Same thing with elementary night, uh, twenty, and high, middle school nine, and then, of course, maintain the habit kissing for three R. These slides here just detail that a little bit more specifically for some details on those, we've already talked about the three R. So, our upcoming discussions here, so I slipped like three or four slides there, real quick for you. So, again, it's September ninth, we're gonna come back and talk, focus a little bit more in on modulators, future use, relocation, removal, Rising Star and day school, how we want to bridge the intermediate gap between the dates that we have. Rising Star and day school, how we wanna bridge the intermediate gap between the dates that we have, the dates the county has, the long-term plans for the Hartwood site, and talk a little bit about the middle school nine location, so we can start looking at land for that. And then, of course, we'll be back again in October for another work session, and then hopefully approval in November.
The Hartwood site long-term plans, do they have any plans after that's, uh, not, due now, about putting any of that urban sort of stuff in there? Like, do we have a second model, do we have a new building or something, other than?
So we'll, yeah, we'll.
Are tying in county resources to it?
Right, so right now, there's no, there's no plan for water and sewer out there.
Okay.
But it, it is a, it is a valuable site for us to use for potential flex space for a while, while we're looking at maybe a day school, the Rising Star, those types of programs, so we'll talk about that.
Yeah, the day school gets closed, we need a new one.
Any questions?
Could we get the projections for high school seven, what it, what the, um, what it would look like out towards when we plan on replacing it, what these projected enrollments would be like?
Doctor Robertson. And then Dr. Mahandro's online. Michael Pilot, Peta.
It would be part of the facilities.
Doctor Robertson, I'm just unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Hello, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
So for the sake of time, we're going to move through the first few slides. This is a continuation of our conversation where we were exploring potential consolidation scenarios for CGS. And so these first few slides, you've previously seen, the kind of background to the program and to the Governor's School and its structure. So where we wanna begin is with the scenarios and the criteria that we use to evaluate each of the scenarios. The criteria being travel and transportation, facilities, enrollment, staffing. And we want to kind of reference our conversation, our conversation by sharing that, upon our exploration of the two other scenarios, we found that there were some new challenges that, that presented themselves. Okay, so this is just the timeline, as previously discussed, we're now in August, where we are sharing this information with you all for this, to allow for an informed decision moving forward. This is an updated map of all of our schools and their locations for you to reference as we talk through the scenarios. So we have three scenarios that we want to talk through today, two being new, one being one site, which would house all 360 students. The second scenario would be two sites, one would house 240 students, and the other would maintain 120 students. And then the third site, the third option, would be our current model. So two new scenarios in comparison to our current model of three sites. So option one would be where we would, you all would consider consolidating from our three sites down to one site. So when we look at all of the criteria here, we're able to see the impact of doing so. In terms of travel and transportation, we would see a potentially large increase in ride time for students, in terms of their transportation in the mornings, as well as the afternoon. We would potentially also see an increase in the amount of buses needed to travel from one site to another. We already have buses that are traveling, but with the increased number of students, we may need additional buses to transport students. And then we also have to keep in mind our site-dependent traffic concerns that were already mitigating based on travel in the morning, as well as the afternoon. In terms of facilities, we will be looking at having to transfer CGS technology to that one site, as we'll see consent item tonight, the update of the broadcasting technology, so that technology would have to be moved. Depending on the site that could potentially be selected, there would be an additional need for lab space. And then also the additional need just for classroom space in general, for those students dedicated to CGS. Likewise, we would see an overall increase in enrollment, and that increase in enrollment would lead to an increased need for, for staffing in general, because of the increase in the overall enrollment of the school, but then also potential increase in contract length, because our CGS teachers do have a 10.5 month contract. We would also see potentially a decrease in staff availability for the main school, because we would see main school staff then moving to potentially support those CGS classrooms. Option two would be to potentially consolidate from three sites to two, to two sites. So similar impact, but not as great as consolidating to one site. So you'll see similar information shared here, again, increases in impact on travel, facilities, enrollment, and staffing, but not as great as moving to just one site. So the third scenario is the one that we currently have, and the one that we recommend that we stick with. It would have the least impact on travel time, and students are assigned to locations based on their, on their geographic location, being mindful of travel time. In terms of facilities, two of the three facilities currently are adequately providing classroom space for students. We would need to work on a lab space at North Stafford, and we have a potential solution for that moving forward. In terms of enrollment, we would see a minimal impact, because students wouldn't be moving. And in terms of staffing, we would continue to maintain our current staffing that's previously been shared, and we would continue to work with Dr. Mahandro to address the people-to-teacher ratio that we see, that has historically been an issue, especially as students move into their junior and senior year, and begin to take more specialized courses. Other things that we considered during our exploration process, we thought about our non-CGS locations, High School Six, Mountain View, and Brookpoint. We felt that these sites were not feasible, due to an increase in costs. They may provide additional travel complications, because we don't have CGS students currently going to those sites. And in addition, we will be introducing a new program to those sites, so there would be some implications there. There's a desire to maintain the commitment to 90 students per grade level, I think we previously talked about that. There would be additional costs requiring CGS funds. So again, we just updated, they just updated their broadcast technology, so that would require additional funding to support there. We will also think about the attrition and retention based upon each site. There are also transition factors, if we move to either one of the other scenarios, and you'll see in the appendix there, we detailed what the phasing in and phasing out process could look like at each site, and the impact that that would have on staffing, as well as students, because again, if we're moving students, that's not just, that does just impact CGS staffing, but it could mean additional school counselors, because of their SOQs, or administrators. There may be an impact on the size of lunches and, and the overall bell schedule. So those would be things that we would definitely need to think about, if you all were to consider consolidating. There's also an opportunity to maximize enrollment in the math sections. Again, when students get into the 11th grade, that's where we see a drop in the people-to-teacher ratio, and that's something that Dr. Mahandro has been working on. Tracy, anything you wanna add thus far, I'm trying to be mindful of time?
No, I think you covered it, thank you.
It's roll. All right, so staffing implications, as mentioned, there's an appendix that's attached that goes through this in detail. But when we're talking about the cost and what this would cost us, we have to think about it in terms of potential transition years, which would be years one through three, if we're moving students into two or one site. So there would be CGS-specific staffing needs, if we're phasing out in one or two locations and phasing in at another location. So there would be an increase in staffing needs for CGS at the receiving school, and a decrease in the phasing out location. There would be a potential need for additional 10.5 month contracts at the consolidated sites, the receiving sites, and we approximate that to be roughly $5,000 per teacher each in FY twenty-six. But this is all dependent on the schedule for that building, as well as staff credentials. High end estimate would be no more than $50,000 in terms of impact in any given fiscal year, but likely lower. And then staffing exceptions would have to be made within the main school, as they grapple with receiving those, those new students as well. So we would see an impact there in terms of cost. If we look forward to full implementation, once the phase-in and phase-out process would be complete, we can see here an estimation of the overall total staffing impact. So if we're looking at option two, which would be moving to from three to two sites, we're looking at roughly .5 to a 2.0 reduction in FTEs. Reduction to one site, we're looking at 1 to 3.5 in terms of FTE of reduction that we would experience.
When you, when you say reduced FTEs, reduced FTEs where?
So F, the need for FTEs there, I believe, in the, in the main school.
So the main school would end up losing a half to two teachers.
That's, let me rephrase that, sorry to jump in, so that is.
This is worse. Governor's School students, right?
This is, but this is something totally different.
I was like, how's your answer?
The, the estimate here is the number of full teacher FTEs that are needed to deliver the CGS program, and the number of staffing adjustments we make to CGS host schools, to make up for the fact that CGS teachers carry a smaller number of sections than main school teachers. So, excuse me, with consolidation, the total number, when you add all of those up, would be slightly lower. It's a range, because some of this depends on who the specific educators are, what they're endorsed in, the courses that they can cover, the exact number of students they think, so that's why it's, that's why it's a range. And, but saying it's a reduced FTE, the better way to put it would be, is a reduction in the number of FTEs necessary to deliver the CGS program, and the impacts on the main school from offering the CGS program? What would be done with that, whether it's an actual reduction in FTEs, or a repurposing of those FTEs to do other things, would be a policy decision.
Does that?
And, and I'll probably jump in, it really is around the delivery of math instruction. So if the, all the, all the planets align, and we can consolidate our geometry courses in a way that would allow us to reduce a section of geometry, or a section of, of precalculus, that's where that reduction comes in. But again, we have varying numbers over the course of the last five years to, to know that it doesn't always align that way, so that's why that range is there as well. Thank you, Patrick.
But then you have this statement, since the most likely scenarios would be an overall reduction to one FTE overall, and consolidating to two sites and two FTEs, so you give us a range, but then you have this other, of, is it like a qualifying statement?
Yeah, yeah, I would say, like, we wanna emphasize the range, because that is the range of, of potential scenarios.
Potential out, mm-hmm.
This is our best guess of what the most likely outcome would be.
Okay.
So then, overall, there also may be a reduction in the number of two 10-day contracts required under the consolidation, because we would have a higher people-to-teacher ratio in CGS. But again, it depends on the credentials of, of staff, scheduling. I believe we have, like, maybe a couple of teachers, Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, that are like dual-endorsed, who are teaching multiple subject areas, and so that plays into it as well. But again, we don't know about any future staff that may come on board, and what endorsements they may bring to allow for more efficient staffing of our CGS program.
Can I ask, how long has the program been at North Stafford High School?
Tracy, are you aware?
It was the last one that came on, but I don't.
No, no, I thought, I'm sure it was the last one.
Four times. Oh, four times, okay. Well, how was, how long has the one been at North?
Twenty years.
I don't have that data, but while we're talking, I'll look it up.
Okay, so my question is, is in that, all this time, they don't have a lab, which is disappointing, because that puts them at a disadvantage compared to, and I did read the report, I talked with Sarah about this a couple summers ago, where North Staff, it was mentioned in the reports that North Stafford does not have one. And my question is, why not? But also, I know that chemistry is not taught in their CGS labs, it has to be taught in the main school labs. But CGS has a schedule that's like a Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. So how is that scheduled? Do they just take one chemistry lab in the school just for CGS? Because basically, you know, they, they have such a differing schedule, and with the upperclassmen, and I know, I don't know.
No, you're correct, they are using a main school lab, which does then impact the scheduling for the main school classes. Tracy, are, is CGS using one dedicated lab space, or are they using multiple lab spaces there at North?
So if it's at North specific, we do have a classroom that our science teachers are able to do some labs, but clearly not chemistry labs. So if any chemicals are being used, so they do use a North lab for that. And then we pre-schedule those, so as you said, our schedule is different than the main school's schedule, but we have the luxury of having our schedule set for the entire year with revisions each month, and so our teachers have worked with the main school teachers to accommodate that.
So in the interest of time, since we do have to have the presentation on eighteen nineteen, can we do a quick poll of the board to see if people are interested in further exploration of any of the consolidation options at a future board meeting? Doctor Warner?
No, I, I do not, I, I don't wanna incur any additional costs that be, are gonna be in a tight budget cycle next year. We don't know what it will cost to remove equipment, to reconsolidate things, to transport students, there's a lot of unknowns there. And besides, we have six high schools, I think having three sites makes sense.
Aya, do you have any interest in any consolidation? No, yes?
I don't think so, but I'm still gonna listen.
Well, we're.
Well, yeah, yeah, I don't, I do not, I, but let me just, wow, the amount of work, so this is, this is so informative. No, you guys are the fabulous job, and I can't just sit here and.
It's very thorough.
The depth and level that you went through, because it is complex to understand, so I just, I appreciate the amount of energy and effort that went into putting this together, but I, I don't, I don't see the.
Ms. Randall?
I do. I just, like I said, I'm curious as to why CGS funding hasn't gone into doing a better job at North. In all scenarios, when you say transportation, I just feel like all of our specialty centers and IB are all in the same transportation, so we could even say that is a challenge or a negative, if you will, in all of our specialty centers. So I don't see that, we're literally, if we talk about consolidating from three to two, you're talking about, you know, starting with 30 students. So I just feel like it's definitely, I still have questions, and I would like for someone to sit with me, 'cause I'm not comfortable keeping it as three. Like I said, I don't feel like North has given the support that it should have. And if there's, if the state is paying for this, then I think more should have gone to improving the lab situation at North. So that's, that's where I am.
That's the only. I'm, I wanted to explore consolidating into two, but my rationale is, two things, one is efficiency, and secondly, I'd like to look at the, the applications. If you look at the past two years, the number of applications has dropped fairly dramatically, which is most likely because of our other specialty centers. Our students now have, you know, many more options than they had before. The reason that we have it in three schools is because the school board at the, over the years, has wanted to have a quote specialty program in each of our five high schools. And Mountain View and Brookpoint had IB, so that's how we ended up getting the Governor's School at Ford. So I don't think there's any magic, at least for me, in maintaining three, particularly with all the other choices that our students now have. And, and I would, when I was talking with Dr. Smith last week, I asked about potentially even looking at two schools of sixty each, rather than, what do we have now?
Thirty, thirty each, yeah.
Thirty each. Thirty, thirty each, but, you know, not just to go and do it, but to, to look at it, because of the number of applications and need that we have somewhere else. So I know, I know.
No, no, all right, I wasn't sure when I heard you, right? Did you say sixty at, to each of the two schools?
No, well, cutting, if, if we went to two sites at some point, I'm not saying we should do it now, I think there's a lot more that needs to be reviewed, but potentially, we may not need as many seats as we have, well, maybe we do, maybe we don't, look at these numbers. This is going down dramatically, and we don't know how many of these applicants applied for other programs, and maybe even accepted the other programs, right? Because you can, can't you apply for more than one of these specialties?
Very few.
Well, well, I don't know, well, then send me the numbers, and I, you know, I.
We've got an increase.
So anyway, I, I'm. So anyway, I, I'm interested in...
Over the last year, eight-point-nine percent.
Matters of, and I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not a pro or a con, but I think in the interests of efficiency, it's not a matter of how much is it going to cost to move the lab initially, it's over the term of years, you know, what is, what best meets the needs of the students. So that's why I would be interested in reselling.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think for me, there continues to just be this concern about next year's budget and to add additional costs for next year's budget and the next couple of years' budget as we do the transition. I just think the timing of this is sort of hitting at a bad time. So I'm fine with leaving it the way it is.
I would have liked to explore it. I am also not married to the timeline, but for the reasons Dr. Ms. Healy and Ms. Randall stated, I have strong concerns, and I have for a long time, about the administration of North's CGS and the lack of investment in resources overall there, that kind of like the forgotten CGS. That, you know, regardless of what's decided here today, I hope that we look at that. And then I think as far as the consolidation, we can kind of table it for a future year or further exploration, but certainly not the rush or time sensitivity to get it in for the next academic year.
So then can we put that on the, on the agenda for something, to look at North's lab or lack of lab?
Because it said they thought they could...
Yeah, so I can commit to, when we, when we redistrict next year, there will be additional space in North Stafford, and so we, I can commit that we are going to work with CGS to address that, that, that lab need that we have there.
And I would love to also say, how is the main school affected by the use of chemistry labs? Is it increasing our enrollment in chemistry in the main school for the use of, because chemistry isn't going to be done in a biology lab, it has to be done in a chemistry lab. So I'm just curious, how much of the main school chemistry time is consumed and how has it affected the enrollment of our chemistry classes? Thank you.
Are you talking about after we do the lab or are you talking about it now?
Well, the lab has nothing to do with chemistry because the lab is only going to be like a regular science lab, but chemistry labs are different because they require their hoods and whatnot. So I'm curious how much time, I do want the lab information for North, but I also want the information for how much mainstream, main school is affected by the use of CGS using their chemistry.
Dr. Smith? At, at Forge, for example, at Forge, we have one science lab and it is equipped as a chemistry lab, so all four of our science classes are able to exist in one lab. We don't use an outside labs.
But not at Stafford?
Not at Stafford.
And at Stafford, look, we only don't...
The only one who doesn't have lab for anything...
Doesn't have a dedicated, but we've identified spaces that we could, we could very well consider.
And would that be also CGS funding?
So that we adjust our agenda to add Elementary eighteen-nineteen down there?
It will be our funding?
We'll do it that way. Ms. Healy, you will amend the agenda on the floor to add eighteen-nineteen down there?
Isn't it all there for that decision?
No, no, we're not discussing, it's only consenting eighteen-nineteen today, we're deciding how.
I can get it done in two minutes.
Well, that's what you got, is we don't go to thousands.
I mean, do you want to do that, get it done in two minutes? Then I'm going to go.
All right, go.
Or we can do it out there, I mean, it doesn't matter.
Does that include finding a commission? Let's go there.
There it is.
All right. We followed the process, just like we did last time.
For naming and for...
For naming mascots and colors, okay? There's the policy, which you already know.
Yep.
We had our engagement period in June.
Yes.
We had our public hearing, public input meeting on June twelfth. The committees met on July eighth and tenth. These were the members of the committee. For Elementary eighteen-nine, I'm sorry, eighteen, we landed on a primary recommendation of Barea Elementary with Oscar, Otters, or Foxhounds, and the school colors of purple, gold, and navy. We have two alternate ideas, Falls Run Elementary or Little Falls, unless the high school is named Falls Run, and then we would do Little Falls Elementary as our, as our backup. These wanted Foxhound or Otters with school colors of purple, navy, and gold. Elementary nineteen, we landed on a primary recommendation of Brookside Elementary, Blue Jays, with an alternate as the Owls. Their colors were turquoise, navy, and lime. Our alternate was Crowsnest Elementary with an Osprey as the primary mascot, an alternate of the crows, and their school colors with lime, navy, and turquoise. Next up, you'll get them in another work session, general public comment tonight, final adoption at your September meeting.
Thank you.
I told you, I was like, it's a...
I'd like to extend, oh, we're going to do, okay. I'd like to extend gratitude this evening to the Brookpoint High School Navy, JROTC. Members of tonight's color guard are Leanna Lewis, Bradley Figaroa, Juliana Garcia, Esosa Odeasing. The instructors of the Brookpoint High School JROTC program are Master Sergeant Selwyn Reed and First Sergeant Jason Polanco. Ms. See, could you please take the role?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase. Ms. Eason.
Here.
Ms. Guy.
Here.
Ms. Halsted.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Irish.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Ms. Sigmund.
Here.
And Dr. Warner is here, but I'm sure you have a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Healy, did you have a change? Oh, no, we don't have to change the agenda, is there a motion and a second for the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please cast your votes. That motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for the consent agenda items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please cast your votes. That motion also carries unanimously. Dr. Smith, are there any announcements of administrative personnel appointments?
Yes, ma'am. Members of the board, I am pleased to introduce several administrators that you just approved on your consent agenda. So first, I'd like to introduce Ms. Amanda Black, who will be the new Assistant Principal at North Star, North Star Early Childhood Education Center. Ms. Black will lead North Star Early Childhood Education Center as the new Assistant Principal. She started her career as an active-duty military in the United States Navy before moving to a career in education as a middle school teacher in Florida. She joined the Stafford Schools team five years ago as an ECSE resource teacher and most recently served as the Coordinator of Early Childhood Education for the last two years. Ms. Black earned her Bachelor's of Arts degree in History and Literature from Old Dominion University and a Master's degree in Special Education. She also earned a Master's Certificate in Applied Behavior Analysis from George Mason University and a Certificate in Educational Leadership from the University of Mary Wash, William and Mary. Congratulations, Ms. Black.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Smith, Madam Chair, members of the school board, I had to write my thank you on a card, even though it's short, because I was just going to get up here and I knew I was going to forget what I was going to say. But I just wanted to say, thank you for the opportunity to serve Stafford County's youngest learners as the new Assistant Principal at North Star. We're off to a great start for this year, and I look forward to seeing what this year will bring. And I wanted to say a special thank you to Dr. Warner. I didn't realize it was your last time with us, and so Dr. Warner's been with us for a while and been a tireless advocate for our program. So I just wanted to say a special thank you, and I look forward to working with the next person that's going to take over that role. So thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Tina Bryan, Assistant Principal of Colonial Forge High School. Dr. Bryan will join the administrative team at Colonial Forge High School as the school's new Assistant Principal. She joins us from Fairfax County Public Schools, where she served as a Special Education teacher for seven years and the Education for Employment Opportunities teacher for six years. Dr. Bryan graduated with a degree in Special Education from the University of Memphis and also earned a graduate certificate in Instructional Design Technology from the University of Memphis. Her graduate certificate in English Language Learners is from the University of California, San Diego. She earned her doctorate in Educational Leadership from the American College of Education and a graduate certificate in School Leadership from Longwood University. Welcome to Team Stafford, Dr. Bryan.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Smith. I am so excited to be part of the Colonial Forge Leadership Team as Assistant Principal, and it is my honor to serve the community and such dedicated staff. I would like to extend my thanks to Principal Terry Hampton for her amazing guidance and support. And I'd like to thank all the other dedicated staff members I work with, such as Rob Bingham, who tonight is being the volleyball person for me. So thank you. And also Stephanie Degory for her Stafford County leadership experience, it's awesome to work with her. And for Mr. Tim Roberts for his institutional knowledge, and for Jeff Berry with his outstanding school spirit and activities leadership. It is my honor to serve Stafford County, and I'm really passionate about creating a safe and learning environment for our community. Thank you so much.
Next, I'm pleased to introduce Chad Gardner as our new Director of Fleet Services. Chad is the new Director of Fleet Services for Team Stafford. He is a familiar face, having served as the service team lead and a longstanding member of the Stafford community. Mr. Gardner graduated from Stafford High School, where he started his studies in automotive technology, went on to earn his Associate's of Occupational Studies degree in automotive truck and industrial technology from the Universal Technical Institute in Houston, Texas, and most recently, he completed the Experienced Supervisors Institute at VCU, Douglas Wilder School of Government and Public Affairs. Currently, he's working on a bachelor's degree in Business Administration from Southern New Hampshire University. Congratulations, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, thank you, board. Just want to say, thank you for the opportunity. I've been with Stafford Schools for quite some time, and it's done, done wonders for me and wonders for my family, and my wife and my two kids are here with us, with me tonight, and I just want to say that Fleet is a really special place, and I realize we're probably some of the most removed from the classroom, but, you know, we, it's really a special place. We do a lot for, you know, the schools and the county side as well. And any of you who have never been down to Fleet, I invite you to, once, once the dust settles, we've got a lot going on right now, but I invite you to come down, take a, you know, give us a visit, take a look, and see what we're all about. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Nicholas Leeson, Director of Athletics and Activities for Stafford High School. Mr. Leeson here with us, maybe? We'll give him a hand anyway. Just a couple of things about Mr. Leeson. He will join Team Stafford at Stafford High School as our new Director of Athletics and Activities. He joins us from Charlotte, North Carolina, where he served as the Athletic Director for South Mecklenburg High School for two years. Prior to this role, he was an Athletic Director and Physical Education Teacher at international schools and in North Carolina for ten years. He orchestrated a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand Facilities Improvement Plan and rebranded the Athletic Department at South Mecklenburg. He holds a bachelor's degree in Human Nutrition, Foods, and Exercise from Virginia Tech and a Master of Science in Sports Management from Western Carolina University. Mr. Leeson also earned a graduate certificates in Project Management and Secondary Education and is a Certified Master Athletic Administrator. We are excited to welcome Mr. Leeson. Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Sarah Skinner, who will be the new Assistant Principal at Brookpoint High School. Ms. Skinner has been a part of Team Stafford for fifteen years as a substitute teacher, a paraprofessional, a math teacher, and most recently, as the Dean of Students at Brookpoint High School. She served on curriculum committees for the Freshman Success Course and for the Elite Freshman Course. She also started the Stafford County Pop-Up Prom Free Dress Drive. Ms. Skinner earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in Integrated Studies from George Mason University and a Master of Education in Secondary Education from the University of Mary Washington. She earned her postgraduate degree in Administration and Supervision from ODU. Congratulations, Ms. Skinner.
Thank you, thank you so much, this is awesome. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys so much for this opportunity, I am truly grateful, and I'm deeply honored to step into the role of Assistant Principal of Brookpoint High School. Stafford County Public Schools has been my home since second grade, I attended Ferry Farm Elementary, Gale Middle School, Stafford High School, and I am a proud graduate of this district, and I'm also a proud daughter to two incredible retired Stafford County students. And then the many roles that were mentioned within this county who I have called home for so long, it has really helped me and shaped me to prepare me for this moment as an Assistant Principal for a county that has helped raise me and now gets to help raise my boys. And I get to do so alongside the most amazing administration team, and for that, it is my greatest privilege. And I am so thankful for the chance to continue to work with the most incredible and outstanding staff, students and families at Brookpoint High School, and I look forward to an amazing year and amazing years ahead. Thank you guys so much.
And one more appointment, I'd like to recognize Ms. Abby Wicker, Director of Research, Evaluation, and Strategic Improvement. Ms. Wicker joined Team Stafford in 2021 as the Coordinator of Competitive Grants and has served as the position also as the Assistant Director of Research, Evaluation, and Strategic Improvement for the past three years. In this position, she has secured and managed over eight million dollars in competitive grant funding over the past four years and supported development and management of our division's strategic plan. Prior to her time with Stafford Schools, Ms. Wicker worked with the Kids' Involvement Network in San Antonio, Texas for twelve years, as the Twenty-First Century Director and as a Training Coordinator. She has also worked as an Executive Director for the San Antonio YMCA and the Deputy Director for the UP Partnership and as a business owner of a residential and commercial improvement company. Ms. Wicker earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in Political Science from the University of Texas at San Antonio and a Master of Science degree in Organizational Leadership from Our Lady of Lake University. Congratulations, Ms. Wicker.
Thank you, I'm more nervous than normal, so pardon, but I just want to say thank you. I come on the heels of two incredible women, Dr. Towery and Dr. Schutz, who have helped grow our department, which allows us to do more for our students and our families, so I am incredibly enthused about continuing that journey and grateful for the opportunity.
Ms. Sigmund, that concludes the appointments.
Okay, we will move forward with our awards and recognitions.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Smith. This evening, we'll recognize students and staff that epitomize our values of students' integrity, respect, community, opportunity, and excellence. We begin by celebrating the Stafford Middle School Boys Track Team. Gentlemen, please call forward as you hear your name called. The Stafford Middle School Track Team captured the state title in the boys' sixteen-hundred-meter relay. The relay team included Keon Kelly, Gavin Midget, Ethan Towery, and Lloyd Newman. Lloyd Newman also took home the state championship in the one-hundred-meter hurdles. We know the essential role coaches play in encouraging their athletes, and we also congratulate the head coach, Carl Zolkowski. Gentlemen, right here. And assistant coach, Kelly Moore, for their role in preparing these young champions. Congratulations, team, on these outstanding... Congratulations, team, on these outstanding accomplishments. We're going to take a photo. Don't go anywhere. Congratulations. Like this one. Next, we'd like to recognize A.G. Wright Girls' Track Team for bringing home the state championship in the 4x400-meter relay. Ladies, please come forward as I call your name. The winning relay team of Aleah Williams, Callie Brown, London McLennan, and Lauren Yule raced their way to the top showcasing incredible teamwork, determination, and speed. Adding to the victory, Lauren Yule also earned state recognition with an outstanding performance in the 800-meter run, an impressive achievement. We also extend a thank you to their coaches, Latonya McLendon, James McLendon, Andrea Jackson, and Ronald Robinson for your exceptional leadership in guiding the team to victory. We are so proud of these athletes and their coaches for their hard work and commitment. They are true champions on and off the track. Congratulations. Finally, we're proud to celebrate another historic win, recognizing a group of young men who have not only made school history, but county history. Earlier this month, the Colonial Forge High School Boys' Track and Field Team capped off their season by capturing the Class VI State Championship. It was the first for any team in Stafford County and a moment of pride for our entire community. Just days later, four of Forge's students, four of Forge's standout seniors, can you say that three times fast? Took their talents to the national stage. Competing at the 2025 New Balance Nationals in Philadelphia, the Eagles' 400-meter relay team soared past some of the nation's best, winning the national title with a blistering time of 40.69 seconds. In doing so, they not only edged out the top team from Florida by mere hundredths of a second, but also shattered the Virginia state record they had just set at the state championship. To put that into perspective for those of you who, like me, are not mathematically inclined, that's an entire lap around a standard track in 40.69 seconds. Gentlemen, as I call your name, please come to the podium to be recognized. Our 4x100 relay state champions who set a new state record and the New Balance Invitational National Champions, Malik Dark, Brian Harris. Brian is also the state champion in the triple jump. Matt Fisher and Owen Charlo. We had another state champion, Tayshaun Donnel in the high jump. Is Tayshaun in college? And their team members, Sean Hill, Curtis Kibler, Aiden Hopkins, Jaden Richards, Mason McConnell, Fasipa Mayya, Yacine Elteblai, Pearson Bodrick, and Christopher Lynn. We also like to thank their coaches, Sean Hill, Holly Brimhall, Miriam Robinson, Tara Fuller, Leslie Cardwell, Patrice Hopkins, Mike Roberts, and Amanda Flood. Gentlemen, we are incredibly proud of you. Your achievement is a testament to the talent, teamwork, and tenacity. To the coaches, thank you for pouring into our students and encouraging them along the way. We wish you all continued success and we cannot wait to see where you soar next.
We'll move on with our student representatives' report. Ms. Irish?
Good evening, everyone. As the school year begins again, we're excited to see student engagement picking back up, back up. Over the summer, Lillian represented students on the naming committees for Elementary School 18 and 19, where she provided input for the names. And now that the school year is underway, we're looking forward to gathering even more student voices. One of our first projects will be sending out a student feedback form. We've had this mostly ready to go for a while now, but we figured sending it out during the summer months when no one's checking their email would not be a good idea. We're also starting to talk about together and looking through options for helping to encourage peer-to-peer tutoring at the schools and with the goal of creating more opportunities for students to support each other and get involved with their schools. As the school year continues, we're eager to build on this momentum and keep finding ways for students to share their perspectives and help shape their communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen comments. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Citizen comment, which is profane or abusive or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order. Ms. Hall, if you'd like to call forward our speakers?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, there are three citizens signed up to speak. The first is Michael Bradshaw. He'll be followed by Shamgar Connors and then Shannon Fingerholtz. Is Mr. Bradshaw here? Mr. Connors.
Mr. Connors, if you can't act like a human being, I will ask you to leave.
That's exactly what this is all about. Ah, ah woo, meow, meow, wolf, wolf. That means Shamgar Connors, Hartwood District. I speak like that because in all aspects, except physical, I am a wolf. It's a shame. I have to explain that because so many bigots out there are not inclusive and only speak English and not animalies. My pronouns are meow, by the way. Now, this is all about, we know, we'd 20 dash, the policy 2420-P in the Stafford Policies and Regulations technically allows legally, boys to use the girls' bathrooms, locker rooms, and other spaces by elevating sexual orientation and gender identity to a special protected class. The superintendent has total control of this policy, by the way. I printed it if you want. So, thank you for supporting all the trans students, especially over non-trans students. Our superintendent also comes from Loudoun County where they, they just rightfully suspended two boys for 10 days where they dared to ask why a girl was in their bathroom. Hopefully, he'll do the same here when that happens. Now, I'm here representing a group called Furry Gamers Against Trump. That's G-A-Y-M-E-R-S. I'm here to discuss the bigotry going on in the schools, which we all just witnessed two seconds ago. As we all know, from children telling their parents, there are furries in every school in Stafford, right meow, all the way down to elementary schools. They bark, meow, hiss, and crawl around on all fours in the classrooms, and you let them do it. But, right meow, there's extreme bigotry for anyone who's a furry, therian, alterhuman, or other kin. For those who don't know, a therian is an individual who identifies as a non-human animal to some degree. Also, a furry is basically just a trans animal, or as I like to call them, tranimals. Now, since I and other students like me identify as being a furry, we're devastated as to why our gender identity and sexual orientation are being ignored and discriminated against in Stafford schools, just like I was discriminated against when someone demanded I act like a human. I'm here today to request from my tranimal furkins that all schools put kitty litter boxes in all the bathrooms to properly respect our gender identities and sexual orientations. Since my littler friends support going trans at a very young age, they should easily accept what tranimals need to be inclusive. Schools should also supply kitty litter that changes color if there's an illness for public health reasons and inclusivity. My tranimal furkins are tired, okay, of being expected to use toilets for peeing and pooping. Everyone knows that toilets should only be used for drinking only. Another request we're making is that schools have a gender marker for records but no option to change your species. That's so bigoted. If we can support trans children, we need to support furry species as well. We also need tuna in the cafeteria every day. We also need scratching posts in every classroom. And also, if people want to say hello to each other by sniffing their rear ends, there needs to be an exception in school policy laws that happen. All right? Sorry. Now, we all know the founding fathers were all trans furries because they wore huge wigs and fur coats. This is our rights as Americans and illegal immigrants to express ourselves. And so, we need this to happen in Stafford because we're letting Policy 2420-P, which was in the notes today, to be reviewed, and nothing was supposed to be changed. And I did want to mention one thing. Here's a Facebook post from one of our School Board members. She put it on her page. We can't name them because they're allowed to name us, but not them. But anyway, love you guys. Please support diversity and inclusivity. Ah woo!
Shannon Fingerholtz, Hartwood District. I spoke at the Board of Supervisors meeting last week, and I'd love to speak at the Board of Supervisors meeting also this week, but unfortunately, I can't because our Board of Supervisors meeting and our School Board meetings are on the same day. And I know I've asked for this a few times, so I would be interested in having the School Board meetings and the Board of Supervisors meetings on separate days on the weeks, especially with the Board of Supervisors increasing their schedule. It makes it hard for us to advocate on both sides of the street because they control all of the money. So, just wanted to say that again. And thank you, guys. And y'all do a lot of work, and staff here does a ton, ton, ton of work. And I know it's the beginning of a new year, but they never stopped working over the summer. So, I definitely want to thank them and thank them for all the work that they're going to do this year. Thanks, guys.
That's it? Mr. Bradshaw has not returned?
Is Mr. Bradshaw here?
Okay. Move on with our action items tonight. The first one is 8.01, Appointment of a School Board Member to Serve as the Board's Liaison to the Head Start Policy Council for the Term of September 25th through August 26th.
Motion to, for Dr. Chase, to serve as the liaison for Head Start.
Second. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Chase, and thank you for your service, Dr. Warner, after five years on the Head Start Policy Council. Item 8.02, Selection of the Name, Mascot, and Colors for High School VI. Ms. Halsted, would you like to, do we have a presentation? Are we just moving forward to, Ms. Halsted, would you like to make the motion?
Oh, yeah. Motion, do I have to make it like separate or just motion to approve?
You have to, no, you have to choose one.
I motion one.
To start the discussion.
Anyone?
Motion, the one you want to approve.
Oh, okay. Motion to name High School VI Hartwood Stallions. Hartwood High, yeah, it would be, it would be Hartwood.
Hartwood High Stallions.
But they would be the Hartwood High Stallions. So, okay, motion to approve naming Hartwood, High School VI Hartwood High Stallions.
Second. Okay. Is there discussion on this item?
I just had the question of why we're picking the alternate recommendation rather than the primary recommendation of the committee.
So, I, well, A, because you said it didn't matter which one I chose. That's number one. So, I picked that one because then she said, pick the one that you wanted. That was the one I actually voted for. I also have spoken a bit to some of the Hartwood constituents, and they have put forth a, you know, outside of the committee, which was important to hear and to get it going. But they really, there's a lot more than just those people on the committee. And even though I appreciate it, they really, I think they really liked the idea of the stallions. The thing that came up more frequently than not in conversation was they couldn't visualize a storming stallion mascot, and so that was a little bit more favorable for them. So, that's why I put that one first, not to dismiss the work of the committee or anything like that. It's just, I have had further conversations with the Hartwood community. Ms. Haley?
I just want to confirm. The name would be?
Hartwood High School.
Hartwood High School. Okay, because you said the name would be Hartwood High Stallions. So, I just wanted to make sure what we're voting on. So, it's Hartwood High School and the mascot would be the stallion. Okay. That's, that's all. I do want to say, I appreciate the work of the committee, but we are here representing our constituents, and I'm going to defer to Ms. Halsted's recommendation here, you know, in my vote on this motion.
So, any other discussion? Ms. Randall's thinking about it? No? Dr. Smith?
Chair, I just wanted to point out, I know there's been a recommendation that's the name, the mascots, and colors, and so I didn't know if you wanted to include that. Just as a part of that, or you're going to do that separately? So, just wanted to provide a point of clarification there.
Because they are different than the primary.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they different?
I can provide clarity on the recommendations if you'd like, or if you...
Yeah, I mean, I, if you want to do that, but then...
So, the recommendation for the, the primary was Falls Run High School Falcons with colors black, gold, and silver. The alternate was Hartwood High School Stallions, black, silver, and gold.
Do I need to change the motion on that or to include the colors?
You could have a friendly amendment.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendments to the motion.
Okay. So, I would like to make a friendly amendment to recommend that High School VI is Hartwood High School with the mascot of stallions and the colors of black, silver, and gold. Who seconded me?
Maya. I, I just want to say, I do appreciate all the work that the committee did, and I do appreciate it that it's Ms. Halsted's magisterial district. I just personally favor the Falls Run just because Hartwood High sounds like a Disney musical, but that's just my opinion. And so, this is exciting. This is, this is an exciting step to be able to name our high school and start moving it forward.
A very distant third. All right. No other discussion? We are voting on naming High School VI Hartwood High School with the mascot of the stallions and the colors of black, silver, and gold. That motion carries six to one. Congratulations, Hartwood High School. Item 8.03, this is the approval of proposed changes to the graduation dates for the 25-26 and 26-27 school years. Dr. Smith?
Yeah, Dr. Robertson, our Executive Director of High Schools, will come to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the School Board, and Dr. Smith. Tonight, you have before you a proposal to modify our high school graduation schedule for the 2025-2026 and 2026-2027 school years. For at least the past two school years, graduation ceremonies for our comprehensive high schools have been held on two days, resulting in three graduation ceremonies being held on one day and the remaining two being held on the other. Currently, Brookpoint and Colonial Forge are scheduled for May 28th at 6:30 p.m. and Mountain View North Stafford and Stafford High School are scheduled for May 29th at 6:30 p.m. Following this year's ceremonies, we conducted an after-action analysis. An initial meeting was held on June 4th with all high school principals, the chief of schools, representatives from transportation, and myself. Feedback was also solicited from Safety and Security, Communications, as well as local fire, EMS, and our Sheriff's Office. There are multiple concerns raised to include traffic flow as well as adequate coverage from fire, EMS, and the Sheriff's Office. Additional consideration was discussed for the opening of our new high school, which was newly named this evening, thereby increasing the number of ceremonies occurring on the only currently scheduled two days. These options were reviewed by principals and cabinet members in June and July, with the proposed scheduled currently before you, receiving support of all high school principals and cabinet with the understanding that they would rotate time slots annually. Captain Newhart of the Sheriff's Department also provided feedback and his support of our proposed option to move to three different dates with time slots on each of those day, each of those dates, one time slot per day. He strongly feels that this proposal would allow for more adequate coverage from fire, EMS, and the Sheriff's Department. In addition, the Safety and Security Task Force, consisting of the Sheriff's Office, EMS, fire, and emergency management, have made a recommendation that we schedule no more than two graduation events on concurring dates and times because doing so creates, doing more than that... because doing so creates, doing more than that would create a risk to life safety due to the strain on public safety resources. Each site requires multiple public safety units to conduct traffic management, security, and EMS services. They feel that they will be able to do so with no more than two schools holding a ceremony per time slot per day. All stakeholder groups, including principals with knowledge of their school communities, feel that the proposed schedule before you this evening would help to mitigate logistical challenges and address concerns raised in our after-action analysis, thereby providing an enjoyable experience for graduates and families alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, is there a motion first and then?
Motion to approve the proposed time change schedule for the 25-26 graduations. And the 26-27?
Second.
Okay. Um, Ms. Randall, did you have a question or discussion?
Yeah, um, I don't really feel comfortable voting for something that's TBD. Like, I just, I don't mind approving the 25-26, but I kind of think I want to wait till I know more specifics about the 26-27. Also, I can't tell from the calendar. Is, uh, in 27, is Memorial Day the 31st or the 24th? 31st?
In 27?
Yeah. It's not on the, um, calendar, but I, I didn't...
Memorial Day in 27, is that on the 30th?
The last Monday, okay, so that is the 31st.
So, that's following. And the reason why we have TBD for the schools is that there would be a rotation of the schools. So, we would still hold those same, we're asking to hold the same dates and time slots, but then the schools would rotate in terms of whose ceremonies would be held on that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Um, and so, because we feel like we have some time between now and then, we didn't want to pre-assign schools to those things and times.
But if you're doing it in a rotation, what is the problem with? I, I'm, I'm not, I'm just curious.
No, no. And so, some of, some of the things that we discussed, for example, is that we want to be prepared for inclement weather.
Right.
Um, some schools are more prepared than others. Uh, some facilities are more prepared than others. Right. And so, we want to make sure when we assign for 26-27 that all schools were adequate, adequately prepared to go inside, uh, should that be necessary. We just want to be mindful in our planning.
Okay. So, will there be some? Because I know the evenings are more, um, concerning about storms coming up.
Correct.
Sir and I had a great time with a tornado watch at Stafford. Um, but, uh, so would they always be relegated to, a school that could handle a coming in? Will they always be relegated to, and, yeah?
That is our current thought process, correct.
Okay. So, there really wouldn't be a rotation for the schools that can handle going inside? They would just always be relegated?
Not at this point until we would, until we felt comfortable that the other schools would be able to handle in evening time.
Have a good plan B.
Correct, and move inside appropriately.
Okay. And is there a reason why we're not, like, bringing this now? And I, I, I know we do a lot to try to get public input.
Yes.
Um, and the reality is, we probably wouldn't. But I just wondered why we wouldn't just give it until the, like, here it is, and then next meeting, allow, if any? Like I said, it's usually our thought processes are, allow the public, and, and then, we don't get that.
No, sure. I think our goal was to bring it to you all. We discussed it at length, um, in cabinet as well as with principals, and they have the opportunity to go back to their schools and, and talk with their communities as well. And our goal is to communicate any changes as soon as possible so that families are able to, to make any necessary plans and arrangements. I know that in some buildings, uh, principals are already receiving requests about graduation information. So, our thought process was just trying to be as timely and as early as possible in, in our communication if we were looking to make a shift. In addition to the, the recommendation that came forth from, from the Safety Task Force, we just felt a sense of urgency in terms of bringing this forward for consideration.
I, I have no problem with making an alternative plan. I guess I just really would like a little bit of opportunity. Like I said, may or may not happen. I don't know.
Okay.
But for a decision process, I think I'd wa- want to wait, but if that's not the will of the board, so be it. But I just, um, I do appreciate, you know, the amount of work that you guys did to confer with partners that we need to have involved in graduations. Like I said, Dr. Chase and I had the really bu- big fun part of being in a tornado warning, um, Mountain View as well. Um, so, uh, you know, those were fast twists of plans.
Yes.
Um, and I appreciate all that work that principals have to have with you and, like I said, with our other community partners. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah. So, so, um, you know, I think it's important to keep in mind that the sheriff's department is saying, "Don't do three at once," and if we leave it the way it is, we have three at the same time. Um, and let me just echo what, uh, Ms. Randall said. Um, it's pretty crazy to be in that gymnasium and to know that if it had changed from a watch to a warning, we all would have had to get out of that gymnasium very quickly, and I don't personally think we would have been able to do it safely. So, from my perspective, I want all our graduations in the morning because the tornado warnings almost always are in the evenings and the afternoons. So, from a safety perspective, um, I'm very supportive of this plan.
I, um, just a couple of things. And to Ms. Randall's point, I just feel like we could have, we could let this go on and on and on. I don't think we would get, one way or the other, there would be dissension somewhere amongst the ways because there's no way to really handle all of this without whatever. I do want to ask two questions. One, I will assume that, and this isn't on here because High School 6 won't have, oh, Hartwood High.
Yes, Hartwood.
I have to get used to that now. Oh, that's so exciting. Hartwood High won't have, um, a senior year.
Correct.
Silver, black, and golds, black, silver, and gold. But anyway, um, they won't have a senior class for this one. But the following year then, our single unit would be two, and that's how we would rotate.
Correct.
Now, do you guys have a sense of how you would rotate these? Would the schools be a lottery, like you're just calling to see? Or you're just going to rotate them on a circular basis?
We've talked about just looking at how they're currently scheduled and rotating, but the decision in terms of what that would look like would involve all principals, and they would have input in terms of our selection process of who would go in which time slots for 26-27.
Okay. And my last thing, just because this comes up every time for graduation.
Yes.
Can we please reiterate for the public why it is impossible for us to have a single venue, five-high-school-graduation program? Please.
Well, I, I think the answer to that is pretty obvious. There is not a, a venue within close proximity that would allow for a similar experience. Um, I would say the closest, largest venue we have would be the Expo Center, but it doesn't have, like, that, that stadium seating that we would need. I think parking would also be a concern as well. We just don't have the venue in our immediate area that would allow for, um, a comparable or, or an enhanced experience for our families and students.
If I might add just a little bit more to that, because we did, we've looked all over to see what might be possible. We've looked at, you know, Fred Natt Stadium. There's nowhere to go indoors if there's a weather event like we had, right? If you look at the Expo Center, the last time we looked, the people, our graduates would be able to bring maybe one person with them. And we know that's not the experience you want. You can't, how are you going to, you're going to choose one family member, one parent? We know that's not the experience they want, and so, we don't have that facility. We did look up north, and, and Eagle Bank Arena is, is very packed and also very expensive. Um, I would say it's about $20,000 to $25,000 per school to go and, and graduate there, and so, we don't have that as well. So, um, yes, it is, it is very much a challenge, and we don't have a great solution except for this schedule to try to go in the morning, go when it, when we're not going to have the weather events or at least likely to have those weather events, spread them out, um, so that we can accommodate that.
I appreciate that. I just, and I definitely, I, I support this. I think this, this makes all the sense in the world. I just, it's that conversation, and that can, from my emergency management background as well. I didn't want to say that, see, but she said it, so it's just, you know, that, that's right. She did.
Ms. Healy?
I, I understand the need for the change, and I support the change, but I'm going to vote against this because then I, I told Dr. Smith when I was advised of this last Thursday that I think the community deserves an opportunity to have notice and some input. Um, and Dr. Chase mentioned, you know, have them all in the morning. This doesn't meet your criteria. Um, so, I, I'm not sure it's ideal. I also agree with Ms. Randall. Um, I don't think there's any immediate need to set it for the, um, 26-27, particularly since it's all TBD. I, I don't think I'd ever vote for something that was TBD unless it was to come back to the board to confirm, you know, that. But I, I, I don't like the idea of making decisions that affect the community because we all know how important graduation is to the families. And we have probably over 2,000, um, I don't know what the numbers, it varies, 2,500, depending on the year, um, graduates, and, and then the thousands of people that are affected. So, I'm, I'm not going to support this, but it's not because I don't see a need for a change because I, I think that makes sense, and I appreciate all the work you've done with, working with the, you know, the safety and, and fire and rescue in the, in the sheriff's department. Um, but I just, I don't understand the, the reason why we have to do it tonight and not two weeks from now. That's me. That's, that's my approach. I asked Dr. Smith if he had, you know, run it by his parent advisory committee, could, at least, we would have had some parental input, but there wasn't, there wasn't time for that either. So, basically, this is a unilateral decision on the part of the board. Based on the recommendation, and I'm, I'm sure it's a well-founded recommendation, but there has been no community exposure other than if somebody happened to look at the agenda that came out Friday evening between then, you know, and now. So, that's the reason I'm, I'm not going to support this. And I, I would like to put my objection on the record to approving a schedule that has TBD for, you know, almost two years from now.
Do you want to make a substitute motion?
Well, my substitute motion, uh, and, and I don't know if this would be acceptable to the board, would be to bring this back at the next meeting and, and have it reviewed to see if we can fill in those blanks, and also to look at what Dr. Chase suggested was having them all in the morning. I mean, then it's not going to be a matter of a lottery, and if people want to go at night and they only get to do it every, you know, couple of years or whatever. Um, I, I don't know.
I, I think one of the problems with the other one in the morning, if I now could be wrong, is school is happening that first day of graduation.
Correct.
And in both years?
Mm-hmm.
In both years, it's school that day?
Correct. The first day of graduation ceremonies for both years is the last day of school.
Last day of school.
Correct.
So, that's why.
So, that's the other reason why we moved it to the meeting.
But one has it.
To the evening, excuse me.
The proposed schedule for 25-26 has it Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Correct. So, the first evening for, so, for example, for the 25-26 school year, the 28th is the last day of school, which is why we'll be looking at an evening ceremony as opposed to the morning. The other thing is, we didn't want to move too far beyond the end of the school year because honestly, at that point, staff is starting their summer break, um, and we want to make sure that, um, we are mindful of that in terms of expectations for their attendance and support for, for the event. And so, that's why you will notice for both years that we don't go any more than two days beyond the end of, of the school year.
Perhaps we should look at the school year and to see if we could make the school year end on Wednesday so that we can have a graduation on Thursday. Anything is possible. Certainly at Hartwood High, since we're going to be in Disney World land.
Hartwood Stallions. I, so with all due respect, though, I, I hear what everyone is saying about the public and the comments, but this was all precipitated from public comment. Like, we got enough public input to say, "Fix this," and they all, what, all the parent, like, at graduation time, all the emails that we get, "You need to fix this," you know? And, I mean, every year for three years, everyone has a particular issue with the way it's conducted because it's, we're trying just to shove, it's, you know, 10 pounds of potatoes in a 5-10 pound bag. So, I get what we're all saying about weighing in on this exact schedule, but this schedule is exactly from public comments. It's what we heard and what the superintendent has heard and what everyone has heard, the principals, over time, about us coming up with an answer to the graduation issue.
And principals brought all of that information to our June 4th meeting, and that's why we were intentional about holding it so close to the end of the school year while information was still fresh and while they were still, um, receiving feedback in terms of the, the parent and community experience of the graduation ceremony. So, although it may not be in writing here, that feedback was considered and brought forward to the meeting that we had, um, June 4th with principals.
So, can I just?
I'd like to second, I'd just like to second, um, Ms. Healy's substitute motion.
Can I ask a question? On the May, on the May 2027 calendar, you were saying being respectful of staff time, and I see that the 27th is a staff work day, but is the 28th also a staff work day? Or are we asking them to come? Um, I'm on the May 2027.
You're on the 2027 calendar, looking at May.
But I'm seeing the 26th as last day of school. I see the 27th, no school, staff work day. So, if we're proposing a graduation on the 28th, are we asking them to come on a day that's not theirs?
So, that was the case as well this, this school year? And so, principals worked with staff members in terms of the time that they spent in graduation and any additional time that they may have needed in order to wrap up, um, grading and things of that nature to close out for the school year. So, that was also something that they worked through and mitigated this past school year.
Okay. I, I, I was just curious if we were being mindful.
I do have to agree with Ms. Halsted. I think a lot of these complaints have been coming up of graduations for the last couple of years, especially, um, some, because traffic problems are concerning. We have to work with our community partners. I have no problem with amending the 25-26 graduations, but I'm wondering if we can delay the 26-27 until we have a more clear idea of what, um, that schedule's actually going to be instead of a TBD. And, um, and, and, and at least this way, we're giving families a lot of notice ahead of time. When graduation is, they can plan for it. They can anticipate travel needs and other things. So, so.
Is that a friendly amendment to one of the motions?
It's a friendly amendment to my original motion, which I think we have to vote on the substitute motion first.
Listen up.
Okay.
Mine was just to bring it back next, two weeks from tonight. Relooking at those.
To the original.
The evening graduation.
Is that a subs- second substitute motion? No? Okay. Yes. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Higman. Um, so, just a couple of points here I just wanted to make. So, the, the reason that we brought you 2026, uh, with the schools filled in is it was based on feedback from principals and public safety. And so, I think is, there is some rationale here. So, as we've talked with them about, so Colonial Forge is the most equipped right now to go inside if needed, and so, we have that, and they're already on a Thursday night. When you look at the, the Friday, the 29th, you have Brookpoint and Mountain View on the two different sides of the county, and then on the Saturday, the, uh, the 30th, we have North Stafford and Stafford. And so, they was, we're intentional in working with public safety about, you know, spreading them out on different parts of the county. The thought around 26-27 is to approve the structure, right? So, kind of have one, you know, no more than two at a time, so we at least can share that with families. And then, we would announce the, the dates or the actual schools a year in advance, but it would be after we got through graduations in 2026, got the feedback, let's see how it goes. Um, and we're happy to bring that back to you if you'd like. We wanted to approve the schedule, the, the structure of the schedule so that families knew, "Hey, there's going to be, you know, more, no more than two each night, but here are the, the three dates it could be." So, that was the rationale and thinking behind that, so we could communicate as much as possible, but also leave us some flexibility based on needs and what takes place. We can actually, uh, take action on things a year in advance and bring that back. So, just wanted to share that clarity.
Okay. You need something to, do you have something?
That makes sense. So, you're saying, like, if we were to go ahead and approve the structure, you know, someone could say to their, you know, grandma, Aunt Jimmy, or, no, Aunt Jim, Aunt, Uncle Jim? Whatever, whatever. I'm tired. I'm sorry. I only had one cup of coffee today. But basically, like, families know in 2026, these are the three days of graduation. So, I'm not going to make plans to leave before that day, right? So, that gives you a little bit of structure for, for people because that's a lot of the issues sometimes when you do change the dates. They've already booked their cruise, or, you know, families already come in on a different day. Well, now you can tell your family, "It's one of these three days. I don't know, I won't know for a year, though." So, that's not necessarily a, a bad idea, but understanding the why of the TBD makes it make better sense for me. Um, and I do understand that we do normally try to bring things to the public twice before we vote on them. Um, I understand why we wouldn't this time because this is being driven by public comments and public complaints, but mostly in, in my head, the reason why I would vote to, to go with this is because of the safety aspect. And there's, I mean, I would assume no one in the public would disagree with that, but even if everyone in the public did, I would still vote for it because of the safety aspect. So, that's it.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah. So, I, I don't really see two weeks as being a huge delay in making this decision. And there are times when our families or the public notice something that we don't. And so, I would like to give that opportunity and not assume...
And so I would like to give that opportunity and not assume that, that they won't, because I'm often surprised that there's something I hadn't thought of that a parent brings up that ends up being an important thing. So I just, I anticipate that, that this will go through either tonight or in two weeks, but I think it's important to allow families to weigh in.
But just to capitalize on that, though, so, so there are things that we, that a parent might bring up to us, but then that will require going back if we're going to, then we're just telling the public that every consideration that's being put forth has the potential to kind of go through the rigorous process that we've put this, this actual schedule through. So I think that's a mistake, just because we could do this all year and never get anywhere if that's the way we're going to be, because then folks will say, well, I presented this, you didn't take that, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. We brought our experts together and we asked our experts what works for them. Well, but I mean, we have to go.
This was not self-initiated. If the board had initiated this, I would look at it differently, because we would have built in possibly time to have parent input. But this is something, and I, again, I'm not objecting to the change, it's the process, and it's leaving the parents out, because it's so important, graduation's so important. And I also have to, you know, share Dr. Chase's, you know, concern about the evening. If we're so, you know, adamant about it being a safety issue, having it at night, then why not try to look at our schedule? Unless the committee said absolutely there's no way we can touch our school schedule, we cannot possibly, you know, end school on Wednesday. But I haven't heard that. And I respect what you're saying, Ms. Halsted, but I did not hear, when I talked to Dr. Smith last week, and I haven't heard from Dr. Rice, that, that this was based on input from, you know, the, the community. And if, if that's the case, then perhaps that would address my concerns, but it's still not letting people know before we make a decision. So, you know, the board's going to vote on this, you vote on what you want to do. I would prefer to give it that two weeks. I don't think two weeks in between now and, you know, the end of May is going to make that much difference in terms of planning, because people can assume it's going to be one of these three days. But I would ask that we go back and look at whether they can all be in the morning the same time, on different days, three different days, and not have that evening, so we won't be in that position. Because if we say that we have a school that is most capable of accommodating an inside graduation, then that's pretty much going to lock them in.
That's not the case, because it also has to do with the size of the graduating class. So once, for example, North has a reduced capacity, they will likely be the school that is able to accommodate an inside graduation, because they just won't have as big a class. Forge happens to kind of align the planets in having a class size that is also able to move inside based on facility side.
For next year, is that?
For next year.
Is that the base? See, I don't have all these facts, and I, and I appreciate.
I'm a Forge senior, so, parent, so.
But you have more information than I do. So that's when we had this discussion earlier today, I said, I'm assuming that you have more information than I do, and I'm assuming that you most likely learned about it before last Thursday. But I'm glad I had that opportunity to get it in advance, albeit, you know, not a whole lot in advance. So if we all have the same facts, then maybe we'll look at it differently. That's all. And this is not, you know, this is just an example of sharing information, if we all share. And this is not reflected on you, Ms. Sigmund, but somehow, we all need to get all the information so we're not, you know, second guessing, or you're saying it's based on this or that. And I'm like, gosh, I didn't, didn't read it in the memo, because you all know I'm a paper person and I will read it, you know, what's, what's in front of me. And I'll, and I'll listen, too, but I just, I don't know why we can't have two weeks. But I, you know, just.
I, well, I'd like to. I would actually like the opportunity, I have a couple of questions. One, the concern I had as far as the rotation and the structure. My initial concern was making sure that North and Forge are generally, regardless of what the rotation is, are not at the same time, because there's only three miles that separate them, so.
Mountain View as well.
And that's the other thing that we're considering is satellite parking. For example, there are some schools who share satellite parking locations, so it would either mean identifying additional locations or making sure that those ceremonies did not occur during the same time slot.
Well, that's generally, Jen, of course, I'm familiar with the North Forge traffic pattern for obvious reasons, but again, that's the experts to figure out, like, how do you put that in an order where, even though we're rotating in a way that's fair, that we are not creating traffic conjunctions that we don't anticipate for year four of the rotation versus year six? I, it's no secret I have a senior, so I have kind of been in the graduation game for the past four years. Our daughter is in the choir, so they are often kind of participating in, in graduation in a different way. And therefore, our preparations, even to get the choir on the field, are they inside or the outside, where are they going to be? I mean, these are conversations that I, in particular, have been personally privy to in a parent capacity, and, you know, the stress, I mean, the years where it's always blue skies for the ten-day forecast, oh, our fingers are crossed real tight. But this year was kind of the first year, I think, that we did have, you know, a strong reason for concern on weather, and that ended up, you know, thank goodness, we were able to move inside and, you know, have a great event. As a parent, I appreciate, you know, the safety factor first, most of all, especially, you know, we got to know how to get grandma with her assistant devices and making sure that she'll always be able to get to where she needs to be. If, for me, it is, we are, I can't imagine that we are not going to make the change and allowing for community feedback. I think the community recognizes the need to make this change. I know we've talked about it a couple of years now about having to go to two graduations a night. I think we all anticipated that the timing would be when high school six had a graduation, but due to the increased class sizes we have, making each graduation larger in anticipation of the new high school opening, that makes it more complicated, because we do not have a backup plan for these large class sizes to come inside. So to kind of break them up now and putting them at a timing so that if we need to go inside, we can, and if we aren't going to be able to move inside, that we have a spot, a timing in the day that is more weather-friendly, is scheduled. I think that what we will hear in feedback is, I recognize that we need to make a change, just don't change me. And that is not necessarily a fair request for community members to make, because we are working with lowercase r Resources Limited, because we just don't have that many days, we don't have that many locations, and we have to get all of them done in a relative amount of time. Nobody's going to want to wait a week for graduation because of a weather delay. That being said, if the only feedback is going to be, don't move my night or my day, I don't think we should be waiting two weeks for that request. I think that we need to make a decision for at least twenty-five, twenty-six, so that schools and families and everybody in the law enforcement and first responders can prepare for that and plan for that, as far as staffing goes and budget and all that kind of stuff. I do understand, it is stressful to think of a TBD, but I, when Ms. Guy said, we're earmarking the three days and then we'll figure out based on graduations what that recommendation is, I can get behind that, too. So I will be supporting approval tonight, because I do think it's in the best interest of families who are planning for graduation to know even with that two weeks notice. Is there any other discussion? Okay. So the first motion, Ms. Healy, if you would restate the substitute motion so that we have that clear for the vote.
To defer the decision on this matter until the next meeting, to have it come back at the next meeting, and to have the superintendent review whether there is a potential change in the evening meeting to have that in the morning. It would be either that Thursday morning, and I understand that would require school ending on Wednesday, but I don't think that that's impossible at this point. I mean, we have, if we'd have to start a day early or somehow look at the schedule during the year, that's always a possibility. And then if we really, you know, are adamant about it being, you know, safer to have them in the morning, they would all be in the morning. I have, I have no problem with, with the, you know, with having them over three days. I don't have a problem with these, but I also want to give the public, the parents particularly, an opportunity to weigh in. And, and I, I would imagine we will get a lot of support for this, because it is, you know, there's a lot of traffic, it's a lot of stress, you know, getting there, and, you know, this should be better, you know, for, for our families as well. But it is a significant change, and, and I would like to give them the opportunity to have those comments. Thank you.
She had me, I was like, okay, maybe we can just wait two weeks. I know we don't want to, I just, I just want to go home, but I get it. I get it, right? But until you started talking about changing the actual date that the school is going to end.
The evening, that's right.
Yeah. And that, and that's where you lost me, because we don't know all the plannings that goes into doing the calendar, and I do know when you mess with something, you mess with ten billion gazillion things. So that's where you lost me on that one. Which means I'll vote no.
That was, and it was said to explore it.
We're going to cast our vote on the substitute motion.
Explore it within two weeks.
He can come back and say it's impossible.
I'm going to cast our vote on the substitute motion to defer. The motion fails even with that vote, four-three, but three-three-one?
No, it was, it was a mistake.
Okay. So, but for the record, okay.
Revote on the substitute.
Yes. Yes, let's call the vote again. Motion fails with Dr. Chase, Ms. Healy, and Ms. Randall voting yes, and Dr. Warner, Ms. Sigmund, Ms. Guy, and Ms. Halsted voting no. To the original motion, which would be to approve the proposed changes to the graduation dates for the twenty-five, twenty-six school years as published. With your, you had an amendment?
I was going to offer a friendly amendment to the proposed schedule, so that TBD, but honestly, I like the structure.
Okay. No friendly amendment, the original, okay.
Well, then I have a question for the, if we vote on this and we vote with the TBD, are we voting when the actual TBDs are filled in? Or is it, you vote for the TBDs, therefore, the schedule, like, I'm curious.
We vote for the TBD because I, I appreciated Dr. Smith's explanation that these are just placeholders.
Right.
And we will use this year to, to look at the graduations.
So will we be responsible for voting for the next?
Will it come on consent, for example? But not, we, we will probably have to bring back, I would imagine.
Well, I, I wouldn't assume probably anything unless it's part of the motion.
So our, so we would bring back, you would bring back to us next year, this, the actual schedule?
We'd be happy to bring you back the schedule next year. I, I would say it would be in June or in August, just thinking about if it had time to do our after-action. Thinking about if these are in May, if we have time.
But this means we are agreeing to a six-thirty PM graduation on Wednesday, May twenty-six. I mean, I will note that the reason we have probably never had a weather problem before is before, two years ago, our graduations were always in the morning. We never had an evening graduation. So I, yeah, so we'll do whatever, but.
We also did have, like, grandmas fainting in the, at eight-thirty in the morning, which is why it was great to have it in the evening, because we were tired of people passing out, my family member being one of them. So it's like, you're danged if you do and you're darned if you don't.
So we were voting for the twenty-five, twenty-six graduation schedule as proposed, the twenty-six, twenty-seven framework, and with a final resolution on the schools
in August of twenty-twenty-six.
After-action.
Okay. I hear you. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion carries five to two with Dr. Chase and Ms. Healy dissenting.
Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
All right. Board members and staffer community, I have been excited to, to share the updates and the exciting things that are taking place across our division. I want to share a few updates and really highlight the incredible momentum we're on building across our school division. From student transitions to transportation and award-winning programs, from technological improvements, we are off to an incredibly strong start. I also am very pleased to report that the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for Stafford County Public Schools' transportation was a resounding success. Let me take a moment. Let me take just a moment, we'll share this video recap with you. So this was not just a smooth start, it was a testament to the hard work and new efficiencies we have put into place. Our team reported only minor typical delays that are common on the first day of school, and we successfully managed them. Strategic improvements directly contributed to the most significant success of the week. Our afternoon routes were completed earlier than they've been the past two years, and on the first day alone, our, every bus was back in by six-oh-nine PM. This is an outstanding achievement and a win for our students and our families. The feedback from our principals and the community has been overwhelmingly positive, and this successful first week sets an excellent standard for the rest of the year, and it's thanks to all the dedication and planning for our transportation team and our, and our staff. This year also represented our best opening staffing status in seven years. We opened the school year with ninety-eight percent of our classroom teaching positions filled, with the same percentage filled among our licensed positions, which includes our classroom teachers, as well as our classroom specialists, counselors, social workers, and other related service providers. Our new licensed educators come with an average of eight years of experience, and we're pleased to add them to our workforce supporting our student learning. In the cases where we do have remaining vacancies, our human resources and talent development team has worked closely with schools to identify options for in-school coverage of needs, and they prioritize recruitment and onboarding of long-term substitutes and new staff. The summer months were filled with strategic preparation and projects that benefited students and families. Our facilities and maintenance team completed over thirty-six million dollars in improvements, which include continued construction at elementary school eighteen and nineteen, Hartwood High School, cleaning and maintenance of four million square foot of classrooms and offices, and processing over five thousand work orders. So much work takes place over the summer. And as we welcome students back, we're committed to ensuring every student, staff, and family member receives a safe, engaging, and welcome environment in our schools. Their efforts ensured that students returned to schools that were safe, clean, and ready for learning, and we appreciate all of their hard work. I also want to take a moment to talk about something truly special, the launch of our new mobile family engagement vehicle, Scout. We rolled it out at our PAC-PAL party at the beginning of August, and the feedback has been phenomenal. Scout, which stands for Strengthening Community Through Outreach, Understanding, and Trust, is our commitment to bringing our schools directly to the community. It offers everything from free books and school supplies to important resources on enrollment and wellness. And this isn't just a vehicle, it's our way to build trust, bridge gaps, and provide real support right where our families are. Parents and students are already saying, it's so cool inside, which is exactly the kind of energy we want to create, and I'm incredibly proud of this initiative and all the good it will do. Speaking of community goodwill, our reimagined school supply drive, the Empower Pack Project, provided over fourteen hundred backpacks filled with essential school supplies, helping students to start the year prepared, confident, and valued. Backpacks were personalized by student favorite color or theme, and this truly allowed for community members and PAC pals to connect their goodwill to a real student. This couldn't have happened without countless volunteers, community partners, and Empower Pack pals who gave their time and resources. These efforts strengthen- These efforts strengthened the connection between school and home, ensuring students have the tools and support they need to succeed, and I personally want to thank every partner and person who supported this important work. The summer months are also a busy time for the major professional learning events that kick off our school year. This began in July with Admin 360, a three-day orientation event for new principals and assistant principals. And this is where department leaders provide critical updates for them to start their new roles successfully and provide guidance around how to address issues that may arise during the first months of the school year and how we can support our schools. This strong relationship between school leadership and central departments is critical to enable our instructional leaders to spend as much time directly with students and teachers. The last week of July brought us prep to success. This is an annual celebration that welcomes all of our new licensed hires. Nearly 400 educators participated, which included new hires, as well as current staff that have transferred into new subject areas. This helps to ensure we have a strong start to the school year as they're in their new roles. New hires have the opportunity to spend time learning the ins and outs of their new building, build relationships with their peers, mentor, and new administrators, practice working with critical instructional technology tools, and benefit from professional learning sessions on both academic content and strategies for instruction and classroom culture to help them succeed. The feedback from participants has been tremendous, with nearly 75% of participants responding that nine out of 10 felt that they felt prepared, better prepared for the school year and more connected to their school community as a result of the week's activities. Many educators hired from other divisions remarked that it was the best orientation experience of their careers. A huge thanks to human resources and talent development team, along with communications, academic programs, student services, technology, and our school leadership teams for making this event a success. Finally, as all of our staff returned from summer the first week of August, staff had the opportunity to participate in the Division-wide Welcome Week professional learning opportunities. Our educators gathered by content and grade levels to focus on curricular materials and instructional moves that helped us deepen our strengths in tier-one instruction this year, which is one of our critical themes for division-wide growth we introduced at Summer Leadership Academy. Again, the feedback was very strong, with most participants agreeing that professional learning provided was relevant, engaging, and effective. Transition Day. To help our kindergartners, sixth graders, and ninth graders feel more comfortable, we hosted Transition Day for our new-to-students on August 11th, which is the day before everyone else returned on the 12th. This provided them an opportunity to meet with their teachers and classmates, tour the school, learn about clubs and activities and how to get involved, but also do it in a, in a environment that's personalized and supported. The feedback from both students and staff has been overwhelmingly positive, and it's something we are proud to have pioneered. The first week was a testament to the hard work of our entire team. Teachers did an outstanding job of welcoming students and establishing a positive classroom environment from day one. Our support staff and administrators worked tirelessly to ensure operations ran smoothly from bus routes to cafeteria services. The collective effort and dedication of our staff was instrumental in creating a strong and welcoming start to the school year. Feedback was especially encouraging, or how everyone felt supported and connected to our students. This strong start created a positive school climate, directly supporting student engagement, motivation, and achievement, and I'm excited to build on this early momentum to ensure we support each and every student and their path to success. As you know, new devices were deployed, and they were deployed to fifth grade, middle school, and ninth grade students. Middle school students will maintain the same device while they are in middle school, and ninth grade students will maintain the same device all through high school. We created digital device agreements that outlines all fees and repairs or replacement of a device, and it also includes information on our acceptable use policy. Parents required to sign the device agreement before a student was issued a device. Information on optional insurance was also researched and also provided to families. Our Department of Technology has done a tremendous job of supporting the opening of school, and I'm very appreciative of their efforts. We are also, we are thrilled to share that the Stafford County has earned the 2025 Creating Excellence Advisory Committee Award, and this is for both Region 3 and the entire state. This prestigious honor from the Virginia Department of Education recognizes the outstanding work of our Career and Technical Advisory Committee by connecting instruction to tangible career applications, CTE programs, increased student engagement, motivation, and long-term achievement, preparing students for success in college, careers, and life. Thanks to their guidance and partnership with our educators, our students have access to hands-on, real-world learning experiences that prepare them with the skills, confidence, and knowledge to succeed. This award celebrates the impact of teamwork and dedication on student success. Strong nutrition supports our strong learners. I'm also proud to let you know that Stafford County Public Schools Nutrition Services has been honored with the Healthy Meals Incentives Awards from the USDA Food and Nutrition Service, which is in collaboration with the Action for Healthy Kids. This recognition highlights our division's commitment to enhancing nutritional quality of school meals through innovative strategies. As part of this initiative, the Nutrition Department has significantly increased scratch-made and locally sourced foods on our student lunch menu. The primary objective has been to reduce the use of processed, prepackaged foods while also increasing the nutritional content in our school meals. As you know, this year, we also launched the Business and IT Center at Colonial Forge High School. It's designed to equip students with the skills, experience, and mindset to thrive in tomorrow's economy. And the center offers five dynamic pathways, including business administration, business IT, cybersecurity, data analytics, and entrepreneurship. The Business and IT Center reflects Stafford School's commitment to ensuring meaningful post-secondary outcomes and expanding our opportunities to reach each student. At the same time, we launched the second year of our virtual learning program. Orientation sessions prepared over 100 students with expectations, strategies, and device training, ensuring they were ready for success in the virtual environment. These initiatives increase access opportunity and student achievement by providing both college-ready pathways and high-quality learning opportunities for all students. I'm also excited to share that we are working with local universities to support those students who continue on with enrollment in college. We have an MOU with George Mason University to provide direct admissions to qualifying seniors with a GPA of 3.25 or higher at the end of their junior year. That we simplified the college application process, and we expanded pathways to higher education through this MOU. Qualifying students that meet the GPA requirement at the end of their junior year and are good standing at the time of graduation will automatically receive admission. We plan to message eligible students directly next month so they can opt-in and receive more information about this program. And speaking of bright futures, today I was proud to be a part of a team that presented a Mountain View High School junior, Elias Copeland, and his parents with a $40,000 Big Future Scholarship provided by College Board. The scholarship recognizes students who take important steps to plan for their futures after high school, including exploring careers, planning for college, and identifying ways to pay for post-secondary education. The $40,000 scholarship awarded to Copeland is part of the monthly Big Future Scholarship Program. Students qualify by completing actionable steps such as creating career, college, and scholarship lists, completing the FAFSA, and applying to colleges. No essay, test score, or GPA was required, and families with lower incomes receive double entries in the drawing. This recognition highlights the importance of entry, early planning for life after high school, and directly aligns with our board's strategic plan, mission, and vision. In closing, over the last two weeks, I had the pleasure of each, visiting each of our schools, our facilities and programs, and I heard time and time again that our opening of school this year was the best they had ever experienced. For some, it was the best opening in just a few years they've been with us here in Stafford. Others mentioned a decade or more, and others said it was the smoothest opening of their, their entire career. In a few cases, and I'll specifically mention a transportation employee and a second-grade teacher, these were individuals that, that decided to change their retirement plans and stay with us longer due to the exceptional opening and support they received as we opened school. And with that, I hope you are just as proud as I am of the work we're doing, the strong start of our first two weeks, and the amazing year ahead. Thank you, and this conclude my remarks.
Thank you very much. We will move on with our board member comments and any committee reports. Dr. Chase?
Sure. I had the, the pleasure of going with Mr. Jason Towery to the first day of school at Stafford High School, Falmouth Elementary School, and Drew Middle School, and let me say, it was wonderful. I don't know how we did it before we implemented Transition Day because I still noticed plenty of kindergartners weren't really sure where they were supposed to go, and I can remember saying, now what grade are you in? And they had no idea. And then I said, how old are you? And then they'd say, five. And I was like, all right, let me send you to the kindergarten area of the school. They were incredibly cute. Lots of parents at Stafford High School trying to cut the car rider line, and the SRO was there to read them the riot act. And then at Drew Middle School, very impressed that the last bus showed up at 9:25. Every other bus was there before the bell rang. I don't think I've ever seen that. So huge kudos to transportation. They really, they really stepped up, and I know last year there were things that, many of those things were beyond their control, and I think they realized that they really wanted to, to show that they could, they could do that. And kudos to Dr. Smith, his first, first year as superintendent, opening the school. I thought he did a great job and a great team. I went to the CIP Advisory Committee last week, and as was mentioned during our work session, very excited for the advisory committee to bring forward what they've been working on in terms of how to rank projects for the three R. Really have worked hard to come up with a mechanism to do that more objectively. So that'll come in September, get ready, it's great. And then last night, I was at the DEI Advisory Committee. We didn't have everybody there, but it was still worthwhile. And I just want to say, we have a lot of people come make comments about DEI. You know, the school board has to report to a lot of people, so we have to report to the local constituents, we have to report to the state, we have to report to the federal government. The state requires us to provide quite a bit of information about different groups of students, and that's not something we have a choice about. That's what state, the, the Virginia Department of Education requires us to do. So I just wanted to say that because we've so frequently of late had people coming and talking about that and maybe not understanding that we are required to report data about different groups of students. And then my last comment is just to really encourage people to advocate for the FY27 budget. I know it's early days yet, but we're going to be opening three schools next year, and we still need money to give staff salary increases, we still need money for curricular changes, all that kind of thing. So I hope that the community will step up to advocate with the Board of Supervisors so that we advocate early, advocate often, because it is going to be a challenging year. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Warner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, it was so nice not to have made the headlines of any of the local papers this year. I am so excited for the way the school year started, and I just am very optimistic about how it's going to go. I congratulate Dr. Smith for his first opening, and it was extremely smooth. I want to extend a thank you to Mr. Maki, who helped kind of go into transportation and help sort through some of the transportation issues we were having, and I think the tiered system for our elementary schools has really been very beneficial. I'm very excited to see how this year plays out, and I will be visiting some schools next week. I usually try to leave them alone the first week of school because it's crazy. I do want to say that Dr. Chase and I attended the Conference on Education through VSPA. It's nice to interact with our fellow school board members and understand that many of the issues we face are issues that are faced across the Commonwealth. We talked about special education and recruitment and offering more support to our special ed teachers because that population of students is, is growing. We talked about communities in schools, and I know that Ms. Halsted is, is interested in that and in ways that we can maybe get more partnerships with the Health Department and find space in our schools for mental health supports and other things. It was just, we did, I did go to the AR seminar, but I decided that our AI program, AI program is way ahead of theirs, so. I think that we're off to a good start, and I think that, I appreciate all the committees that are going to be presenting to us as we start entering the budget cycle, although I don't feel like the budget cycle ever ends anymore. And it is going to be a challenging year, and we have a lot of expenses with opening three new schools. We have growth that we are always struggling with and considering, and we want to make sure that we are able to offer our staff licensed and, and uniform salary scale the most competitive salaries we can. So that is our goal, and going forward, I hope to work on that. Thank you.
Ms. Halsted?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I only have a couple of things. I, I think it's funny, I, Dr. Smith, I'm dying to know if you held up a picture, like one of those little boards in front of you and said, my first, first day as superintendent. I was, I was like really searching for that picture, but, so if, if you don't have it, you might want to go back and make one because that's an important ritual. Anyway, I will say this year on the first day of school, I had my phone in my hand, and I often talk about not obsessively refreshing your screen to check things, but I did that day refresh my email like every three minutes, waiting for like this, I was like, oh, please don't. So yes, kudos to transportation and congratulations on a, on a, a successful first day, but also more importantly to the folks that did have issues that reached out to us. I appreciate, Dr. Shatz, the expedience within which you have answered concerns, have done the research, have gotten back to the parents. So thank you so much because it is a challenging time. I, I want to just kind of capitalize on that as well, say, you know, when we start out a year with this kind of positivity, dare I say, parents, please don't be negative, or at least try and, yeah, right. Try, sorry, we need more wood, no. So just remember, like, you know, we can talk all the time. I'm not been on Facebook for a long time now, like, not searching and scrolling the pages, but people send me screenshots of everything. I am in the habit now of whenever somebody sends me something that's a little stressful, I send them a glass half-full gift just so that I can maintain a little positivity on the situation. So there's a lot of challenges in the beginning of the school year, and I, you know, it's very easy to come back and scream at us and say that we don't care and that we are putting efficiency over safety. I personally find that a little bit offensive because as we can all see, the number one priority of this school system is the safety of our kids. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean we get it right all the time, but we do, at the instant that it's pointed out to us, act to change it to make sure that it becomes safe. So just, let's start this year off happy and stay happy and use happy words, no matter how unhappy you feel, you can turn your frown upside down. Oh, God, I said that out loud. Anyway, I wasn't gonna, I wrote it down, and then I crossed it off, but I said it. Okay. I want to comment on two other things. Margaret Brent folks and Mountain View High School folks. Okay, first, the traffic stuff. So we have asked for us to kind of look into how we can make these first couple of weeks less painful with the traffic and the flow in and out of there. We, we do recognize that it is something that needs to be looked at. We have asked for several things. Now, I am going to say on the, on the outside of that, somebody put a dog park right next to our elementary school and didn't add a separate entrance for that dog park. And not only that, they didn't turn the entrance for the people to come into the dog park away from the school. So we have just taken what was a very large issue and potentially made it a lot larger. So please be aware that if you email us on it, I've spoken to several parents who are concerned about it and what it could, what it could possibly mean for us. I want to be very clear, the school board didn't know, we were not engaged in any conversations, there were no meetings. So please, if you're coming to us, just remember that this wasn't a lack of communication on our part, okay? I love dogs. I am.
A dog trainer.
I am a dog trainer. I love dogs more than anything. I just, I want parents to know that there wasn't a whole lot of transparency on this particular piece of the pie. So, so that is an issue. However, the good news is, Dr. Smith is working very hard as well to help Mr. Towery, I guess this is on you, that little island there, to address some of the ways that we can mitigate those circumstances. So please understand that we recognize some of you may have concerns about it, and we are aware of them. And I love dogs, that's all I have to say on that one. The final thing I just want to say is that, you know, I, you know, I, how I feel about a lot of different things, the budget process this year for me, as I'm on my way out the door, is going to be a little bit more conflicting, I think, because I really, there's so much information out there for, to absorb and to process it. So, so to anybody that's running for school board and to anyone that's considering coming on board, please pay careful attention to the previous years of budget struggles and budget conversations and discussions that have gone on, because you don't want to be taken that on the second you walk in the door in January. on the second you walk in the door in January, and you walk smack dab into budget season in January. Like, you are in the fire from the second you, the second essentially you start, right? The board, this board goes on a retreat every November. It is super important because that's where we go and we really open up all of these discussions and can really get down into the weeds on that one. So just to anybody running for any of these seats, whoever it may be, incumbents returning, new members, new faces that will be here, it's so important that you hear me say, understand the budget, understand what our staff goes through to create that budget, what we're looking at, what our needs actually are, what the nuances are, because it is deeper than you actually think. And I just want to tell everybody that it was a great summer, and I hope you all had a great summer, and it's actually nice to see you ladies and sit up here with you. So that's it.
Ms. Healy?
Well, I can attest to Ms. Halsted's love of dogs, and she has a great command of dogs. So I had a, I had a grand dog, and I loved that dog, but she had a lot of issues, and we had Ms. Halsted come over, and I'll never forget the first time she took the dog, and the dog's like, "Oh!", and Ms. Halsted says, "Nuh-uh, nuh-uh!", and the dog was like, "Whoa", I'm like, "That's what we need to do here on the school board, nuh-uh!". But she is, she is amazing, she's a dog whisperer. She's helped me with other dogs as well. But I want to congratulate Dr. Smith on an incredibly successful school opening, and you've set a new bar. But I also have to compliment and congratulate Mr. Fulmer because poor Mr. Fulmer, for the past few years, has gotten my laments about issues we've had, particularly with Transportation, which have all been wiped out, it appears. Not all, but significantly, number of them, yes. But, but Mr. Fulmer, really, I very much appreciate because I'm like, you know, they work for you, what are you doing here? And you got, you got it right. So, you know, the inspiration starts at the top. You, Dr. Smith, are as good as your staff. So your staff makes you look good, you inspire them, I'm not sure, you know, which comes first, the chicken or the egg, but you know, you're it for Team Stafford, and I want to thank all of Team Stafford because Stafford is a team, and I think the people coming to these orientations realize that, you know, it's a family here, and, you know, we have, we have our problems, but we work together, and it's all, it's all for the kids, so it's been great. And also, Dr. Schatz, the responses you've been, you know, sending to people, I found them to be very thoughtful. I think you recognize, you know, the concerns and the angst that people are going through, and, you know, I feel when I read your responses that you really are, you know, doing everything you can to get all the information and to try to help, recognizing that we're not going to solve all the problems. We can't do everything everybody asks us to do, but we can, you know, look into it, we can treat people with respect, and that's what I, I see is the biggest difference I see right now is the respect. It's not only within the staff, but it's with the members of the community. So thank you, thank you all. Exciting times, another school year. I think our school board representative said something, she says, "We're back in school again." Now, for her, this is her last time because she's a, she's a senior, but yes, we're back in school again, and the students keep coming and we still keep meeting their needs, so thanks, thanks to everyone. At the School Health Advisory Committee meeting last week, they had a debrief about the presentation that they gave, and they raised a question, they said, "Well, what's the school board going to do with our recommendations?". And I said, "Well, that's a good question because we have in the past, you know, had, you know, different opportunities to address, you know, the recommendations either, you know, singly or, you know, in a group at the retreat, but I would like to ask our chair and our vice chair to keep that in mind when you're planning agendas, whether it be for the retreat or one of our work sessions, or, you know, that we do go back to these recommendations from our advisory committees because they put a lot of thought and time and effort, you know, into it, and they have some, some great suggestions, particularly the ones that don't cost anything. They're, they're, they're much easier than the ones with a price tag, but, but all of them, and if we can, you know, have some plan for that, it'd be nice to let our committees know because we're getting through the cycle, you know, of the addresses. And then they had another question, which I thought was interesting, and this was something that, you know, I'd like to, you know, to find out, and I'm sure other people may be interested. They said, "Well, there weren't a lot of people at the meeting", and I said, "Well, that doesn't mean they're not going to see your report because they may, you know, watch it later or they may read it online." And they said, "Do you know how many people actually watch it?". I'm like, "Well, I think there's at least, you know, ten or so", but that's a question, so if we have that information, it would be nice to put that out, you know, because I thought that was an interesting question. I'm always amazed when I run into somebody, you know, in the grocery store and in the street, and they go, "Oh, I saw your, saw your school board meeting", and I'm like, "Really? You watched it?". But it was, it was, it was a question, and theirs was in the context of, you know, how many people are hearing the message that we, you know, that we're putting out and the recommendations we're making. So if we, if we have that information, it would be helpful, you know, to share that with everyone. So anyway, keep up the good work, we've got, you know, a holiday already. I mean, what more could you ask for? A four-day weekend coming up, so congratulations.
Ms. Randall?
Thank you. I'd also like to say, welcome back, and I'd love to give Mr. Wilcox a standing ovation. Oh my gosh, you did so good! And all the team that was included, from central office to Transportation, Fleet Services, everybody that jumped in to make this year start off great. Second, I hope you all had some moments over the summer that put things into a couple of different buckets for you. The first, I hope, was a memory-making bucket, a trip or an experience of some kind. For me, my family, it was supposed to be a cruise for two, me and my husband, to Alaska, somehow became a cruise of seventeen, still very memory-making. I hope you found something relaxing. I hope you watched a sunset or a sunrise, read a book, coffee or tea with a friend, or walk and talk. I hope you had something learning, again, a walk and talk, following a new recipe, self-help, a visit to a museum, a job place, or some other type of learning. Third, I'd like to, welcome back, staff. I enjoyed seeing so many of our leaders come together to tackle instruction. Big shout-out to Dr. Smith. I heard so much feedback about the instructional leadership that he showed for that occasion, and I just really appreciated hearing that feedback. I would also like to thank what I can only call the Bande Bunch. As we've all said up here, family, the Bande Bunch all came together and formulated an amazing new teacher orientation and welcoming back returning staff. No detail was left out, and I really appreciate that. I've enjoyed my committees that I get to be on, serving new on our Legislative Committee, Governance tomorrow. I've done Gifted this month, this week, Transportation, and Parks and Rec. And with mentioning Parks and Rec, don't mean to bring everything down, but it's one committee that I've really enjoyed serving on. I'm only just a liaison, I have no voting, no say-so power, I just enjoy listening and learning and working with them. But I lost one of my members of the Parks and Rec, he was with the Acquia District, Vince Applegate, I've worked with him for five years, and he passed away suddenly in July, end of July. We didn't find out until August, so I'd like to give out my condolences to his family and friends. He was a very special and kind person, so I will miss him a lot. But I do want to thank everyone for their work, their encouragement, and dedication to making sure that students were at the forefront, but the staff that came back and supported them just knocked it out of the park. And I'm not including just the ones in the schools, but also the Bande Bunch too, so thank you very much.
Ms. Guy?
I'll make it quick. Want to welcome everybody back. I have no idea why I am so exhausted and also giddy at the same time today, but, so I apologize for my unprofessional behavior, but I was laughing at all of you women, it just took forever. Anyway, I, yeah, you did, yeah, you did, well, Ms. Healy did. But the point I want to make is, I'm so, I'm so sorry, I'm so happy to be here. I think, I know we're going to have a fantastic year. Everybody at Transportation knocked it out the park, really. I was joking, saying, you know, "That's about my leadership", but it's not. It has nothing to do with me. It has everything to do with the hardest-working people, from the bus drivers to the attendants to Chris Fulmer, you as well, maybe, no? Mr. Mackey, I think Chris Fulmer, I like Chris Fulmer, and our superintendent, but everyone at Transportation, people whose names I don't know, that's the only reason why I don't, I don't say you. I see Transportation staff here. We've had a rough go of it, year after year after year, and I actually overslept on the first day of school, I'm just, I'm just being truthful. But I woke up and checked my phone and was like, "Maybe it's not the first day of school", because I was so confused with where the emails were. I just, I didn't understand why people weren't texting me or complaining, and I know that maybe to a family, you know, maybe like the one person or the few people who didn't have that perfect first day, I acknowledge you too. I'm not saying that, you know, you weren't frustrated or your feelings weren't valid, but at the, I mean, come on, I'm sorry, I'm still giving, I'm giving us A-, so, us, meaning Transportation and staff. I think, I don't know, I'm just, I'm really proud. I was looking for the news people to talk about how amazing we were as opposed to downing us. I do also want to give my condolences to the individual that we lost in the Acquia District. I never met him, but you told me how amazing he was, and then I saw something on social media, it was an anecdote about him, and so I was like, "Oh, man, you know, I missed out, didn't get to meet him". And that's it, I just hope everyone has a great school year, and me and Alyssa are almost done, and we're going to be shenanigans for the rest of the meetings, I'm just letting you know. Thank you.
Does anyone else remember that they were going to do a duet for us? They promised their first year, and that hasn't happened yet, just saying. You have a few minutes?
We already did it, you just didn't see it.
I've been at every meeting. Gosh, what a whirlwind back to school has been. I am so grateful for the effort everyone has put in to welcome our students back to school. I definitely want to echo everyone, congratulations, thank you, gratitude, snaps, all of it, to, for a strong start from Transportation. I know, you know, it's never perfect, we shouldn't strive for perfect, we should just get better, better every day, and I too checked my email, I too was checking my Life360 app because I've got a travel student, a transfer student. I know if they're on time, that's a good sign for elementary. I have a bus stop at the end of my driveway, watch that like a hawk. I was just so pleased with having such a strong starting point to build on moving forward. I also want to thank all of our faculty and staff for your efforts in creating classrooms that are welcoming, engaging, and fun places to learn. My kids are so, so, so excited to be back at school, and I think mostly because none of them, none of them go together. They're all in different buildings. Families, I cannot encourage you strongly enough to please, 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 join and support your PTOs, PTAs, and PTSOs. It means so much, not just for the students, but for the faculty and the staff in the buildings, to know that you are there, that you are engaged, and you're supporting their efforts. Research does show that schools with active parent engagement have students that perform better academically and have lower incidence of absenteeism. So I am very, very grateful to our parents who help make our schools better places to work and to learn. Neighbors, even if you do not have children in our schools, you can help support them. Follow your local schools on social media so you can support their upcoming events and effort. You could drop off a donation for a canned food drive, or candy for a trunk-or-treat. You could contribute to a teacher wish list. You can dine out on spirit nights as well, so a portion of your purchase benefits one of our schools. Check the calendar to go watch a sporting event, theater, chorus, or music performance, or attend an art exhibit. Say it again, you should not be bored. In Stafford County, our schools always have so many cool things going on. Strong schools build strong communities, and I think that is something that we all want. I'm a little floored that most of my colleagues brought up budget, I am not ready, but I want, but, you know, we do recognize that our community has significant needs, we have made significant progress towards those needs, and I think we are on good trajectory, and I just carry with it that hope and that these conversations we've been having year over year over year have brought us to a place where they do understand that we have a grasp of, we actually have a grasp of what we're doing. Like, we know what's going on in our buildings and what those needs are down to the micro level that we can, you know, I'm sure Mr. Towery has a list of every air filter that's been changed in every building and exactly how much that costs, right? So everything, every conversation we have that builds credibility with our funding partners, whether they are here or in Richmond or in DC, I think is a conversation worth having, and I look forward to having them in every facet and format we can. And we could use all the help and support we can get because this job is a big one. We don't expect every member of the community, every member of any other board, to know our job as well as we do, and we just hope that we are good enough at delivering the message to be able to move forward with opening our three new buildings in a way that is a benefit to this community in a way that we've been preparing for, not just the years that we've been building these schools, but for the decades we've been waiting for them. So, and the decades will have in them, these are, these are major investments. So with that, I just want to announce that our future meetings, we are actually, we only have a two-week gap between this and our next meeting, so we will meet on September 9th with a work session at 5:00 PM and a business meeting at 7:00. We also will meet on September 30th, we have a budget roundtable with representatives from our PTOs, PTAs, and Head Start Policy Council at 6:00 PM, to be immediately followed by a school board work session. And with that, we are adjourned.